I got it, I got it. No, no, don't do it.
For April 7th, 2015. At this time, I'd like to call this meeting to order and also have an acceptance of the agenda. So, motion by Mr. Harris, seconded by Mr. Vignani. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. It's unanimous. Good evening and welcome. Are there any walk-ins this evening? Yes.
Can we address them?
Sure.
Good evening.
And your address?
I'm Bill Graham of 14 Tilden Avenue, Minnetonka. And this is Tim Kelly of Collier Road and Second Club.
Gilson.
Gilson.
Seventy-nine Gilson.
Excuse me.
Tim Kelly.
Usually it's the other way around, isn't it?
We come before the Board of Selectmen as members of the current Seawall Committee. We were shocked to learn on cable telecast of the Selectmen's meeting on March 24th that our committee was being disbanded. In 211 at the behest of former Selectman Joe Norton, the committee formed to address the needs of the seawall condition and the lack of attention being given to the seawalls. The members have been from coastal areas as they are the most knowledgeable of any changes in the seawalls. In addition to Committee Chairman Kevin Cafferty, DPW Director, the membership also included a large equipment contractor, a concrete specialist, a person who worked with elected state and federal officials, a person with extensive experience in transportation industry, and on-air meteorologists with extensive experience in weather modeling and climate change, a long-term situat small businessman, the president of a beach association, and several members with personal knowledge of the Blizzard of 78. We gave our time and energy once a month for four years because we love this town. We inspected and reported on wall conditions. We met with residents and state officials and found one of the major problems to be was continued underfunding to the town capital fund for seawalls. Most repairs were done on an emergency basis and much more expensive than had planned. We engaged and supported State Representative Jim Cantwell's efforts to get funding for seawall repairs and worked with the DPW to target repairs. We found that there was no five-year plan for seawall maintenance or repairs, although two studies funded by the town had been done with conclusions that the walls were in dire need of repair or replacement. We recommended a long-term policy. We now have four priority projects earmarked for the near future and many potential projects in the coming months. We were disappointed in town administration for the lack of common courtesy in the way it treats residents who volunteer their time and energy to this town. A phone call, a letter, or an email, or perhaps attending one of our meetings would have been nice to inform us of the disbanding of the committee. We need actions on our seawalls, not another study or a new committee. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
Tim?
So, yeah, I was, I'm kind of new to Situate. I've been here since 2004. Grew up in Dennis, and my hobby all my life has been the dynamics of the atmosphere and the oceans and the land and the geography. And I did my first fifth-grade science, so seventh-grade science project on an imitation of the glacier that formed Cape Cod. And we are neighbors, literally, geographically speaking. So, I've been fascinated, and I grew up on Bass River, and I lived on a hill. I went on fifth grade to a class trip to the national seashore, and I think that's where I found my passion for what I do. Weatherman on NECN, it's our 24th year. And I've always kind of just let towns be towns, not caring how they're run or anything, just, you know, kind of ignorant gratitude. And so, when I had the opportunity, when I was invited by my neighbor Jim to be on the Seawall Committee, it was an honor. And I just went to Town Hall and I filled out the papers. I'm a civil servant, and it felt good. And meeting Kevin, and Bill, and Dave, and everybody has been a joy. And being the go-to guy when there's a snowstorm coming to Situate to say, "How bad is this one going to be?" And then, you know, you always give the scale compared to 1978. And we always say, "Well, it shouldn't be any 78." Although, I hear that the water level on the last storm did get to levels similar to 91, which is very perplexing to me. I went down to the seawall, to the place of the breach that occurred in 2010, and I looked and I said, "Uh-oh, this is trouble." A hunk of the block just to the north of the old breach had fallen off. And I told Kevin, and he knew, and we're not, none of us were shocked when this January 26th storm took down the next section right to it. So, you know, being that familiar with the seawall and the weather, I kind of, we already knew that was going to kind of happen. And it doesn't just impact the people that have the homes right on the seawalls. It impacted all the lettered streets and, same thing happened in Marshfield. I think some of the worst damage was because of faulty seawalls in that last storm. Now, I gotta say, I'm not really a seawall guy. I'm a surfer, I love beaches, and I believe every time you build a seawall that you're going to alter the natural process of the sands moving. And you'll notice on the outer side of Cape Cod and the east side of Nantucket, well, there's a huge controversy on Nantucket with geotubes. But on the east side of Cape Cod, every year, the beaches are, the bluffs are eroded, but there's no homes there. So, the beach always looks the same, so to speak. There's always room for your blankets, although it's not light right now. It's all rocks, which I've never heard of before. Every winter has its own character, every storm has its own character, every town has its own character, and it's great to work with Kevin and see how proactive we are when a storm occurs. And I believe the function of the Seawall Committee has been beneficial in that we, being residents of the ocean, and also have experience in infrastructure and weather, obviously. This is my 30th year as a meteorologist, been studying climate and change my whole life. The sea level has come up 500 feet since the glaciers receded 13,000 years ago, and the sea level is currently ready, going, coming up at about 2 millimeters per year, give or take. And some interesting laws have been passed. In North Carolina, they passed a law regarding coastal zone management where they cannot use climate projection models to make their architectural plans for the future. They have to use actual sea level rise, which I think is a good idea. And then, in, I can't remember whether it's North Carolina or South Carolina, but they're not even allowed to have, make seawalls anymore, and they're being told to take them down. I couldn't imagine if that happened here. I'm fairly perplexed at the surprise announcement that the Seawall Committee was being proposed to be abolished, and I feel that it's a resource that's helpful, and I really don't understand the reasoning behind it. And form a sort of larger, whatever bureaucracy, when you already have us, you could maybe even assign us to do things for you if you had requests.
Tim, let me interject, because we normally have a five-minute rule on walk-ins.
Alright.
There is a topic that's coming up, there are two topics that are coming up, so that's why I say, maybe the discussion could be had a little bit further. But just suffice it to say, it's not more bureaucracy, okay? First and foremost, we appreciate everybody who gets involved. And frankly, I take umbrage with Mr. Graham's position that we're not, we're being disserviceable to, or not being fairly, or not treating people who are serving the town as being accurate. And we're going to be actually, in a few minutes, thanking all of the people who worked very hard, who impacted all the coastal areas for cleanup on all the storms, all the DPW people and the people who were hired to do it. So, I, just because we disagree, we can reasonably disagree. The Seawall Committee is focused on just that, seawalls. What we're looking at is a coastal advisory commission that's going to be talking about coastal issues, not just seawalls. Beach nourishment, wads like Mr. Dorr had come in two weeks ago and talked about. We're going to be talking about trying to replenish, we're going to be talking about revetment, when frankly, we're going to be having a discussion about exactly what this town has been doing, not just through recent appropriations, but also like the theme of what we're anticipating from all the storms. So, that there's a bigger picture here than just seawalls. So, I mean, I don't know, that's why I say, please stick around, because the charge that we have goes into great detail about all the areas that we're looking at. And then frankly, what this commission will do is it will enable then to say, "How about if those people who are just interested solely on seawalls? This is the input what we need." But we had to take a bigger picture of it, because not everybody has a seawall. People have beaches that need to be dealt with. We've got to think about replenishment like North Situate that we're talking about. And that's why I say to you, I disagree, people can disagree with what we as a board are doing. We're not just focused solely on the seawalls, we're trying to take a bigger global picture, short-term, midterm, and then a long-term approach to this, because the water is rising. We know that. And frankly, you know, we appreciate your input, we really do. And frankly, we want people to be involved on this, because frankly, all of us aren't going to be up here, you know, long-term, but you folks will. And you've got to be thinking about not just yourselves, but your community and also your town as a long-term solution to this bigger issue. So, I think, I just ask you to stay longer, listen to what we have to say, listen to what the presentation is. You may disagree with us on it, but we're not focused on saying, "Get away with the seawalls." No. That's just one aspect that we as a town have to focus on. And because, you know, I know Moore Current's a big proponent on, on looking at this charge and putting this together for a bigger issue, long-term, and that's really what we're looking at.
Well, good, great. Hopefully, you consider, you know, the people that have been here, a resource for...
Absolutely. We're not asking for anybody to walk away from this. I think sometimes people are looking at, whenever we make a decision, as a town, that you're saying, "Oh, that's it, I'm done. No more help for me." That's not what we're looking for. We're looking for community and partnership of saying, "These are long-term issues." I mean, putting up a wall in one area could actually, you know, be great for short-term, but what about the long-term issues that we have up and down the wall? Replacing every wall by two feet, is that going to be the solution? The water's rising, so we've got to think of long-term solutions. Beach nourishment is a great re-nourishment, is a great way of trying to preserve your beaches and the water. I mean, because these are structures that aren't natural to be there. So, we have to protect the property interests, we have to protect the town interests with respect to utilities, but at some point, you've got to look at the bigger picture and say, "What can we do besides putting walls up?" And there are certain areas that are better, shall we say, served by doing other things than just necessarily a wall. That's the reality of it. Riprap, jetties, things of this nature. So, I mean, that's what this commission's going to be looking at, long-term, and it's a commission which our hope is that it's going to stay in perpetuity to address these on an ongoing basis, as well as a maintenance issue. But I really digress, because now we've talked about it. We're due to discuss that around 6:45.
Alright. Thanks. So, we're like stepping stone?
Well, it's exactly it.
I'm much a part of it, yeah.
So, I mean, if, right now, we'll probably get to it within the next half hour, and we do appreciate you mentioning Situate. I always looked at the news to see if I, Situate's up there, Tim?
Thank you for your time.
Alright, folks. Other walk-ins, otherwise?
Kim, what's your walk-in?
Just the Keolis.
Okay.
Kevin?
Just a quick one. We were notified by the T quite recently, I'm sorry, I didn't get a chance to get it on the meeting minutes, on the meeting agenda. Keolis is looking to have a shutdown of First Parish Road on Friday night, the 17th, and continue that into Saturday, similar to what they did before on Harlot Street and Beaver Dam. I talked to the two chiefs about it, they don't see any issues with it, and we're just confirming the times. It is a maintenance issue that they have to do repaving around the tracks.
Friday night?
It starts on Friday night at 11:00, and they work all the way up until usually Saturday afternoon around 4:00.
Can you get signage up?
We'll have signs up, we've already got some detour plans up on our website, we'll get it on the town website, and we'll do a blast, but I just wanted to notify everybody that it's at Harlot Street, exactly?
What, Kevin?
It's at First Parish, right where the train tracks cross.
So, Roach Field.
So, you guys...
No, no. No, no. O'Brien's.
Right out of O'Brien's, yes.
Fire station. So, Kevin, can I ask where you're going to put the detour signs? Make sure you put one Elm Street, you know, so people don't go down there.
They did a great idea, they did a great job last time setting up the message boards and getting police details and everything else, yes. And we'll have the message boards going up on the 13th.
Good. So, you won't be able to get down First Parish from Friday night till Saturday midday?
Till Saturday, probably after 4:00. They have it tentatively scheduled.
Okay.
Okay.
Just in time for the parade?
No, next.
It's next, it's the following week.
That's the week after.
Alright, good.
Thanks.
Alright, moving on. Tricia?
Thank you. I have a number of items, and I'll try to move through them as quickly as I can, but with the advent of spring, we have lots of things in play, and I want to make sure the boards are aware of them. First of all, Widow's Walk. Widow's had, had a delayed opening, usually were open the end of March. Right now, the driving range will start operating at noon on April 8th, and the golf course will open for the season on April 9th. So, again, about almost two weeks later than usual because of the winter, but want folks to know about that. The Situate Harbor Community Building is going to be closed to outside events and rentals effective April 10th. There's one event scheduled, that's the town's event on April 21st, but otherwise, it's having a new roof put on, and it's going to close down. The library is closing down June 5th, so they are going to, they're already preparing to move by boxing and storage and weeding, but the library will be closed June 5th, and they hope to reopen in their new location at the Situate Harbor Community Building on June 15th. I'm really, really pleased to inform the board and the public that the Situate Police Department will now be administering Narcan and carrying it as part of their duty personnel. We've been working with the police union for the last few months, as just something that was very important to town officials and public safety in order to save lives. The fire department has been carrying Narcan for years, but sometimes the police department gets there before the fire department, and in that type of situation, minutes and seconds count. So, I just want to express my gratitude to the police union in recognizing that this is a service that they can provide to the town that will have a direct effect on the lives of our residents, and it's something that I think will help residents, and we can really be proud that they want to start undertaking this, this service for our residents.
Can I, just for one second, just so people know what Narcan is, that's a drug that they administer when someone ODs, and it brings a person back to life essentially. And I was shocked when I found out how often they actually use it. So, it is not uncommon, it's not common, it's not an everyday occurrence, but it's not uncommon that they use this and they resuscitate people from an OD. So, it's, it's great that we have more people carrying it and will save lives.
Yeah, our fire department's done a great job. It can be administered a number of ways. The police department will only be using one method, and I don't want to get into the details of it, but I think it's great. Our building department is starting to get busy again. As you know, we're preparing for lots of new development in the town the next few years, and with the good weather and the snow melting and people wanting to do repairs, they're doing in excess of a dozen inspections a day right now. So, we have two full-time inspectors that we added to the budget last year, so I'm sure that will increase. The town's FEMA appeal was heard by the Scientific Resolution Panel last Thursday. That panel was a web conference, it took place in Marshfield with Town of Marshfield, the joint appeal with us. Laura Haberle, Patrick Galvin, Nancy Durfee, and Neil Duggan attended that. Essentially, what happened is the towns presented their case on their appeal about the new FEMA flood maps, and then FEMA presented their rationale, and then five scientists were able to ask questions about the presentation. We will not hear about that for five to six weeks. I don't expect anything till the end of May, maybe the beginning of June, but town officials for both towns have really put a lot of effort into those appeals, and I just wanted to let you know that the first one had been heard. The town is sponsoring an all-board and committee educational forum. We have over 30 boards and committees in town, so that's a lot of committees to keep track of, and a lot of good town work that's coming out of those committees, and we're always looking for new members and for people who are interested in serving the town to express an interest. So, that evening, April 21st, at the Harbor Community Center, we'll have representatives, hopefully, from all those boards and committees, information about those committees, and sort of encourage folks to learn more about the town and get involved in town government. The police and fire department are having a fundraising event on Saturday, April 11th, from 7:00 to 10:00 at the Pilgrim's Skating Arena in Hingham. The, they are playing the girls hockey team and then the boys hockey team. And I just wanted to let everybody know, it's the first annual Town of Situate Public Safety Cup. So, if, I believe the proceeds go to fax, if I'm not mistaken, and so I'd encourage everybody to go there. The work on the town pier is nearing its end, we've been working on that for the last year. The pier's been damaged twice, one due to a boating accident and the other due to the storms that we've had. It will be closed for paving on May, April 27th and 28th, but it will be open to the fishermen. So, wanted to let folks know about that. Your beach and transfer stations stickers have expired as of March 31st. You can get them online, you can mail them in. We've sold almost 5,000 stickers since February 1st online, so we encourage people to do that. We're working on the damage estimates for Juno. Chief Murphy has been working very hard doing the initial damage assessments. As you recall, we have $8 million in the queue for Sandy, and that was 2012, and we estimate right now that we have initial damage assessments of between 3.5 and 4.2 million for Juno this past year. So, hopefully, we'll send that into FEMA. Two more. We have these brochures available to everybody that you'll be able to pick up at the Harbor Masters office and throughout town. It's about great white shark safety as our beaches open. Shark awareness and shark education is a very important initiative of the Recreation Department this year. It is a real concern for us, so we want to make sure people know what to do and be able to recognize what they may or may not see in the water. We have 6,000 of these that have been printed and available, so I want to make folks available for that. And then finally, town meeting is on Monday night at 7:00. There's a ton of information on our website, and if you do not understand anything or have any questions, please call us. We're happy to answer your questions and provide accurate information or get additional information to you. And that is all I have.
Questions from the board? Well, let's move on to the next. The next is a 610. It's recognition vote, Department of Public Works staff recognition for the winter storms. I see Mike, Kevin, Paula, and are they outside? Mike, Kevin, most of the people?
I don't think anybody's here.
Well, this is why we wanted to do this. We wanted to at least recognize the various departments, in particular, the Highway Department, Public Grounds, Water, Sewer, Transfer Station, and Town Hall. Because, as we all know, we're still in the midst of melting off all that snow that actually had fallen in the course of a little over a month, from February, January to February, and seems to continue to linger on. I think what's amazing is that the board was amazed at how much snow had fallen and how much hard work the Department of Public Works actually did. There were over 104 inches of snow that hit this town that had to be removed, and that doesn't include all the sand and all the material, the debris that came over in the overwash, that they, they worked very diligently to remove in a very efficient manner. You know, a lot of people were very appreciative, people were saying, "Thank you very much for getting down a road and getting it plowed so they could get out and widening the road, coming down and helping out in certain instances to, to make sure that the, the roads were clear and also that the water, that they were able to have access." And so, the board wanted to take it upon itself to thank all of the employees who worked through the course of the winter, because we really appreciate it. We understand, we put a lot of pressure to get things done quickly. Sometimes that's unfair, people are working not just 12 hours or eight hours, they're working more in 24-hour shifts or even 36-hour shifts, without the ability of going home to see their loved ones and, and hang out, and instead continue to do it for the benefit of the town. And we were thankful, the police and the fire also during the storms are handling. But in particular, these storms really hit hard on this department, the Department of Public Works. And a lot of times, they don't get the recognition that they should. And so, for the people who are on TV, and you people here should be very proud of them, because I know we are, and I want to at least acknowledge from the Highway Department, Kevin Mickelwitz, George Mason, George Cook, Arthur Johansson, Robert Patterson, Tom Smith, Rich Fuller, Bruce Johnston Jr., Adam Jackson, Paula Berry. Paul is here with us tonight. From the Public Grounds, Fran Lyden, Mike Soper, Tim Durin, Rick Capone, Mark Kundetz, Kevin Stanley, and Derek Lyon. From the Water Department, Wally Young. You might see Wally driving around with his cap up, I can see him around in the truck. Howard Taft, Sean Stewart, Heather Santo Suso, Nora Finnegan. From the Sewer Department, Phil Bailey. From the Transfer Station, Pat Kelly, Doug Patterson. From the Town Hall, Tom Grime, Dave Biagini, and Kevin Lyden. At this time, I think this board and everybody in this room should give a round of applause. With that in mind, that the Board of Selectmen has decided to declare the following. Whereas the Town of Situate experienced record-breaking snowfall and inclement weather in the past four months, really, two months, but four months is during the winter, it seems it's going on six. And whereas the board acknowledges that many, many town departments and public safety personnel worked so hard for you, our residents, and whereas the total snow accumulation for the Town of Situate in this year was 104 inches. And whereas the Department of Public Works employees are responsible for plowing and removing snow, shoveling walkways, roofs, canopies, plowing sidewalks, and whereas the Department of Public Works employees are responsible for clearing of catch basins, cleanup of overwash and debris from the coast, and whereas the Department of Public Works employees are responsible for the continued operation and functioning of water and sewer treatment systems during this inclement weather, and whereas the Department of Public Works employees work long, long days and nights over multiple consecutive days for the town's safety. Now, therefore, this board, your board, Situate Select, Board of Selectmen hereby proclaim Friday, April 17th, as the DPW Day, and the Town of Situate encourage all residents to offer thanks and salutations to any DPW direct personnel that you see. And I also want to thank Michael Breen personally, who is sitting here with us, who actually governed all of this work to make sure that the roads were clear, that the sewer and the water and everything else could get, gain access. And I have to say, Mike, thank you very much for doing this. Last but not least, I do want to say, there is the director who actually generals everybody, and that's Kevin, Kevin Cafferty. I know a lot was asked, in fact, one of which was to have him come pick me up during one of the storms, and we almost got stuck in a snowbank, Kevin. So, and that was it.
I got lost on Tilden Road, I hate to admit.
It was 6:00 in the morning when it was hit, when it happened. So, Kevin, thank you also. Comment, board?
Yeah, I, too, I just have to say something, because it's, you know, growing up in this town, we've never, yeah, Blizzard of 78, we saw one, well, one big storm, there might have been a storm a couple of weeks before, but like John said, you know, we've never seen the amount of snow. Our streets are narrow, some of them are narrow to begin with. Over the years, a lot of equipment has gotten smaller, faster, and you can get away with smaller storms. And now, here it is, Mike's been tested with a lot of pickup trucks and one tons and things like that, trying to do the work where years ago, they didn't have trucks like that. So, it was a real challenge trying to get all, all of those roads cleared. Then we're, you know, sidewalks are a wonderful thing, and now that's just adding to their workload and trying to get that all done. And many times, we've all seen it, typically after a storm, we get a thaw. We didn't get that this year. So, you know, I, these guys make us look good. I've said this before, and I'm going to keep saying it. Someone will call us, and we call Mike or we call Kevin, and I don't know what they do, but they do this, and then they go there, and then we look like heroes. And it's them that are doing it, you know, so thank you very much, you know. Thanks, I appreciate it. And then the spillover, Paula takes every single call, and I heard she went home with a smile on her face. She has to be wishing some days she stayed right over there. So, when she's not taking the calls, Lorraine and Sheila get, you know, the list. So, you know, kudos to you guys, too. You know, it's tough, it can be hot. Very, not very often do you get calls, people saying, "Thank you very much," you know, so... But we understand it, we drive around, and I appreciate it. Thanks.
The only thing I'll add is, is you don't understand how many straight hours these people work, and, you know, Tricia as well, we didn't even go one more step up the chain. These people work 24 straight hours. I mean, I remember seeing Mike at morning meetings where I don't even think he went to bed, you know, and Kevin as well, so it's, it's really above and beyond. This is, isn't just a Department of People doing their job, you know, doing their job they would have left 12 hours ago, and they really are dedicated to this town, and they live in this town, and they're, you know, they're foregoing being with their family to help them shovel out their porch, to really shovel out everyone's street. So, it's really, you know, we're very, very fortunate to have you guys, so thank you very much.
Alright. Thank you.
We've sold almost 5,000 stickers since February 1st online. So we encourage people to do that. We're working on the damage estimates for Juno. Chief Murphy has been working very hard doing the initial damage assessments. As you recall, we have $8 million in the queue for Sandy, and that was 2012. And we estimate right now that we have initial damage assessments of between 3.5 and 4.2 million for Juno this past year. So hopefully we'll send that into FEMA. Two more. We have these brochures available to everybody that you'll be able to pick up at the Harbor Masters office and throughout town. It's about great white shark safety as our beaches open. Shark awareness and shark education is a very important initiative of the Recreation Department this year. It is a real concern for us, so we want to make sure people know what to do and be able to recognize what they may or may not see in the water. We have 6,000 of these that have been printed and available, so I want to make folks available for that. And then finally, town meeting is on Monday night at 7:00. There's a ton of information on our website, and if you do not understand anything or have any questions, please call us. We're happy to answer your questions and provide accurate information or get additional information to you. And that is all I have.
Questions from the board? Well, let's move on to the next. The next is a 610. It's recognition vote, Department of Public Works staff recognition for the winter storms. I see Mike, Kevin, Paula, and are they outside? Mike, Kevin, most of the people?
I don't think anybody is.
Well, this is why we wanted to do this. We wanted to at least recognize the various departments, in particular, the Highway Department, Public Grounds, Water, Sewer, Transfer Station, and Town Hall. Because, as we all know, we're still in the midst of melting off all that snow that actually had fallen in the course of a little over a month, from February, January to February, and seems to continue to linger on. I think what's amazing is that the board was amazed at how much snow had fallen and how much hard work the Department of Public Works actually did. There were over 104 inches of snow that hit this town that had to be removed. And that doesn't include all the sand and all the material, the debris that came over in the overwash that they worked very diligently to remove in a very efficient manner. You know, a lot of people were very appreciative. People were saying, "Thank you very much for getting down a road and getting it plowed so they could get out and widening the road, coming down and helping out in certain instances to make sure that the roads were clear and also that the water, that they were able to have access." And so the board wanted to take it upon itself to thank all of the employees who worked through the course of the winter, because we really appreciate it. We understand, we put a lot of pressure to get things done quickly. Sometimes that's unfair. People are working not just 12 hours or 8 hours, they're working more on 24-hour shifts or even 36-hour shifts without the ability of going home to see their loved ones and hang out and instead continue to do it for the benefit of the town. And we're thankful to the police and the fire also during the storms are handling. But in particular, these storms really hit hard on this department, the Department of Public Works. And a lot of times, they don't get the recognition that they should. And so for the people who are on TV, and you people here should be very proud of them, because I know we are. And I want to at least acknowledge from the Highway Department, Kevin Mickelwitz, George Mason, George Cook, Arthur Johansson, Robert Patterson, Tom Smith, Rich Fuller, Bruce Johnston Jr., Adam Jackson, Paula Berry. Paul is here with us tonight. From the Public Grounds, Fran Lyden, Mike Soper, Tim Duran, Rick Capone, Mark Kundetz, Kevin Stanley, and Derek Lyon. From the Water Department, Wally Young. You might see Wally driving around with his cap up. I can see him around in the truck. Howard Taft, Sean Stewart, Heather Santo Suso, Nora Finnegan. From the Sewer Department, Phil Bailey. From the Transfer Station, Pat Kelly, Doug Patterson. From the Town Hall, Tom Grime, Dave Biagini, and Kevin Lyden. At this time, I think this board and everybody in this room should give a round of applause. With that in mind, that the Board of Selectmen has decided to declare the following. Whereas the Town of Situate experienced record-breaking snowfall and inclement weather in the past four months, really two months, but four months is during the winter, it seems it's going on six. And whereas the board acknowledges that many, many town departments and public safety personnel work so hard for you, our residents. And whereas the total snow accumulation for the Town of Situate in this year was 104 inches. And whereas the Department of Public Works employees are responsible for plowing and removing snow, shoveling walkways, roofs, canopies, plowing sidewalks. And whereas the Department of Public Works employees are responsible for clearing of catch basins, cleanup of overwash and debris from the coast. And whereas the Department of Public Works employees are responsible for the continued operation and functioning of water and sewer treatment systems during this inclement weather. And whereas the Department of Public Works employees work long, long days and nights over multiple consecutive days for the town's safety. Now therefore, this board, your board, Situate Board of Selectmen hereby proclaim Friday, April 17th, as the DPW day. And the Town of Situate encourage all residents to offer thanks and salutations to any DPW direct personnel that you see. And I also want to thank Michael Breen personally, who is sitting here with us, who actually governed all of this work to make sure that the roads were clear, that the sewer and the water and everything else could gain access. And I have to say, Mike, thank you very much for doing this. Last but not least, I do want to say there is the director who actually generals everybody, and that's Kevin Cafferty. I know a lot was asked, in fact, one of which was to have him come pick me up during one of the storms. And we almost got stuck in a snowbank, Kevin.
I got lost on Tilden Road, I hate to admit.
It was 6:00 in the morning when it happened. So Kevin, thank you also.
I just have to say something because it's, you know, growing up in this town, we've never, yeah, it was in '78, we saw one, well, one big storm. There might have been a storm a couple of weeks before, but like John said, you know, we've never seen the amount of snow. Our streets are narrow, some of them are narrow to begin with. Over the years, a lot of equipment has gotten smaller, faster, and you can get away with smaller storms. And now here it is, Mike's been tested with a lot of pickup trucks and one tons and things like that, trying to do the work where years ago, they didn't have trucks like that. So it was a real challenge trying to get all of those roads cleared. Then we're, you know, sidewalks are a wonderful thing, and now that's just added to their workload and trying to get that all done. And many times, we've all seen it, typically after a storm, we get a thaw. We didn't get that this year. So, you know, I, these guys make us look good. I've said this before and I'm going to keep saying it. Someone will call us, and we call Mike or we call Kevin, and I don't know what they do, but they do this, and then they go there, and then we look like heroes. And it's them that are doing it, you know? So thank you very much, you know? Thanks, I appreciate it. And then the spillover. Paula takes every single call, and I heard she went home with a smile on her face. She has to be wishing some days she stayed right over there. So when she's not taking the calls, Lorraine and Sheila get, you know, the list. So, you know, kudos to you guys too. You know, it's tough. It can be hot. Very, not very often do you get calls, people saying, "Thank you very much," you know? But we understand it. We drive around, and I appreciate it. Thanks.
The only thing I'll add is, you don't understand how many straight hours these people work, and, you know, Tricia as well, we didn't even go one more step up the chain. These people work 24 straight hours. I mean, I remember seeing Mike at morning meetings where I don't even think he went to bed, you know, and Kevin as well. So it's really above and beyond. This isn't just a Department of People doing their job, you know? Doing their job, they would have left 12 hours ago. And they really are dedicated to this town, and they live in this town. And they're, you know, they're foregoing being with their family to help them shovel out their porch, to really shovel out everyone's street. So it's really, you know, we're very, very fortunate to have you guys. So thank you very much.
All right. Thank you. Let's move on to the next agenda. Paula, thank you. Next agenda item. And that happens to be a discussion vote on the final housing production plan. Laura Harbottle, Laura, good evening.
Thank you.
Thanks again, Mike.
Kind of hard to follow that item, but...
That's all right. This is a good thing that you've done, the housing production plan. We'd met and discussed it with, I forgot her name, Karen Sonnenberg, about a month ago, if I'm not mistaken, right?
Yeah, she was in here making the presentations.
This is the finalized plan that we have for our housing production. Questions from the board?
For a couple of minor changes, Laura, if that was basically the same thing.
The table of contents, things like that.
Right.
I just have one question for clarification, just with, could you clarify for us and for the public, the proposed 40B on Clapp Road, those 252 apartments, would all apartments retire some of our affordable housing requirements as rental? All of them or just 25%?
It would be all of them that would count. They wouldn't quite get the town to the 10%, but you'd be like within a...
But it would go towards it?
Yes.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
Just so that people know, town presently, based on the report, has 310 affordable units in town. The housing stock right now of all the units in the town is about 7,163. So in order to reach that 10%, you'd need 710 homes, which leaves you short of about 406. What I like about the report is it goes and details how you calculate the 310, and then it goes in further details, all of the projects, some of which have already been passed, have yet to be built, as well as the proposals, and give you an idea of like what's still in the pipeline that's to be built, that may be built. So if all those were built, you're pretty close to almost 10% potentially.
Yeah, yeah. If they're all built, yeah, I think there's...
If they're built, right. That's the big issue. But the other thing I thought was fascinating was the suggestion of trying to take not-conforming lots and maybe that may be short on frontage, or maybe they don't have the right square footage, but utilizing those maybe for affordable, you know, purposes in the future, which would be a really good thing too for the town. Because then you could take some land that may ordinarily render it useless, but in perpetuity you can make it affordable for the community. And that way you could dictate, shall we say, design, I don't want to say design criteria, but you can dictate what kind of structure could be placed there, which is nice. Anyway, questions from the audience? Questions from the board? I think we need a motion on that.
Move the Board of Selectmen approve the final housing production plan for the Town of Situate?
Second. Motion by Mr. Vignani, seconded by Mr. O'Toole. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
unanimous. All right. Laura, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Also thank Karen too. It was well done. Moving on to the next, which is a 625 discussion vote on the OPEB Irrevocable Trust. Nancy, good evening.
Good evening.
Nancy Holt, Finance Director for the town and Town Accountant for Town of Situate. This is a follow-up on a question I had about the trust itself. I was able to receive an answer from Town Council, so I'm satisfied with what was being proposed. Did anybody else have any further questions to ask Nancy?
We need some wordsmithing, and we fixed the wordsmithing.
Questions from the audience? All right. I would like a motion, if that's possible, folks.
Move the Board of Selectmen adopt the other post-employment benefits, otherwise known as OPEB, trust agreement?
Motion by Mr. Harris, seconded by Ms. Curran. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
unanimous. That's great.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, Nancy. We'll see you a little later. Next is a 630 discussion vote on Drain Layer's License Renewals. And...
All these are renewals, right?
Yes.
Anyone have any issue with any of them?
The only thing I was going to ask Kevin, is Kevin gone? I know that just some of the word, in the past, it's, we always get the answer, but some of the workers' comps are expired, but usually they double-check that to make sure...
Yeah, that's a condition, yeah.
So just in case anybody was wondering. Aside from that, these are people that have already been approved in the past, so these are...
I can follow up with Kim Doherty on that.
Yeah.
To make sure they're all...
Perfect.
Move the Board of Selectmen approve the Drain Layer License for Laminar Construction Corp., Pond Corporation, Warner Brothers Landscape and Excavation LLC, and Mankiewicz Contracting, Inc.
Motion by Mr. Vignani, seconded by Mr. Harris. Discussion, any questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
unanimous. Let's go to a 635 discussion vote, Hocker Peddler's License Renewal. Get up, it's caught up here. All right. This is Hocker Peddler's application submitted, and let's see, for Nona's Homemade Ice Cream for the 2015 season. And the second one, which will be separate motions, is for the Zack's Ice Cream for the 2015 season. Zack's actually has a cart, an ice cream truck that goes around.
Question, do we give them areas now? Do we still break them in, like you can go here, you can go there, or the trucks can drive wherever they want to the designated stops?
They can go wherever they want, they just can't stop within like, I forget how many feet of like a storm.
Fourteen feet, and then no more than 15, 20 minutes at a time, things like that.
So I think we thought at some point, if it became too many, we'd say, "You can go here, you can go there," but that never came to fruition.
It hasn't been a problem.
So is Nona's, like a truck, or is...
Yeah. Yeah, they have a truck.
They both have a truck.
No one's here?
No.
They're just renewals, and there have never been any issues.
Except it costs me 20 bucks every time I go to the beach.
Don't you like the music?
Supporting local business tone.
All right. How about motion?
Move the Board of Selectmen approve the Hocker Peddler License for Nona's Homemade Ice Cream, Inc. for 2015 season.
Motion for Mr., motion by Mr. Vignani, seconded by Mr. Harris. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous.
And move the Board of Selectmen approve the Hocker Peddler License for Zack's Ice Cream for the 2015 season.
Motion by Mr. Vignani, seconded by Mr. Harris. All those in favor?
Aye.
unanimous. All right. Now, 640 discussion vote, One-Day Beer/Wine License, Silent Chef for the Situate Maritime Center for May 17th, 2015, from 11:30 a.m. to 3:30 p.m. Is there anybody representing?
Nope.
I just think it'll be a event. It didn't list...
What it was? Yeah, I was trying to figure out. It says, it's just a party.
It should be on the ballot.
It's a party, it says.
What does it say?
Right here. On the license, on the application. It just says a party.
Just a private party.
11:30 to 3:30 p.m.
Move to Grant, Silent Chef, a one-day beer and wine license for a party to be held at Situate Maritime Center on May 17th, 2015, from 11:30 till 3:30 p.m.
Second. Motion by Mr. Harris, seconded by Mr. O'Toole. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
unanimous.
I read that for you.
Mr. Chair, I have an agenda change. We have a time constraint with one of our presentations this evening, so I'd ask at this time if we could take the 7:15 discussion about the GATRA bus service. We've notified the Council on Aging and the Economic Development Commission about that, and Mr. Cole Poise has agreed to wait a bit, so we can take that out of order. So Mr. Gay is here, and I don't know, Lorraine, if you want to check to see if there are any Council on Aging folks or EDC folks. I see a couple here.
All right, so we're going to jump to a 7:15 discussion vote, Greater Attleboro Taunton Regional Transit Authority, otherwise known as GATRA, Public Transfer. Mr. Frank Gay is here. And I know Chris is here. Chris, is any other members from the EDC with you, or?
Anne is here with me.
Anne with you?
Yes.
Sorry, Anne. I just didn't know whether you guys had a quorum. And I don't know if anybody from Council on Aging boards here, anybody else, or just the two? Okay.
Q is here, and Wendy's...
You don't have a quorum, all right. So we'll just, so, Mr. Gay, good evening.
Good evening. Thank you, I appreciate it.
Been about three years, or two and a half years since last we saw you, I think, right?
Yes, yes.
Thank you for coming. So is this actually going to happen?
I think it will, finally. So what I thought I might do is take a couple minutes, because I think there are a few members on the board that are new, just to talk about what GATRA is and how they work. We're a public agency, we're a political subdivision of Commonwealth, we receive federal, state, local funding, both buying equipment and operating equipment. We have 28 member communities, which Situate is one. The difference in our statute from the MBTA basically is that, you know, it's a partnership with the local community. The town only pays for service within the community, and only pays for the different types of services that we operate in the community. And you, the town, would not pick up any other operating cost of any other services that we provide throughout the region. So I think that's a significant difference from the MBTA. We have to contract our services out, and more importantly, it really starts at the local level that the town selectmen, you know, ask the authority to operate the types of services. So whatever we do for the town really starts at your level, and we work from there. I mean, we've done work in the past with the Planning Department, with Laura, and looked at the different ideas of the route. We've done some outreach in the past, and really, the service didn't get started in the past because of the lack of funding. I think right now, we're at an opportunity where we could, you know, get the service funded with some state funding and some local community funding that now you are paying to the MBTA. And I've given you the basic route, certainly willing to look at any different options that we, you, Economic Development, has to, if they want to talk about the route layout.
One question I had on the route layout was, just so that people understand, let's assume we start with Town Hall, so I don't, do we have a map? You have a map, I know. I just wondered if it could get on TV at all, we could, just so people could see it.
We'll bring one in.
Thanks.
Yeah, we're getting copies.
All right, so we've got a map. It starts at Town Hall, goes down, let's say it goes down to First Parish, all the way down First Parish to Common Street. Common Street, it goes to Wheeler Park, comes back out of Wheeler Park, and goes down Stockbridge. And then it looks like it goes down over Stockbridge to Brook Street, down Brook Street, and around Bull Parkway, out through St. Mary's, and then Kent Street, all into the Driftway. And from the Driftway, it turns onto, I guess you could say it's Old Driftway, where the Celtic Paws Animal Shelter is, goes up over the bridge, and then connects to Country Way, and then goes right back towards First Parish again, and then comes back to the Town Hall. My question was, is it possible to go, instead of taking that right where Celtic Paws, or the Animal Shelter, I think it's called New Driftway, go straight to the roundabout, because there are the medical buildings there? And then go to Country Way and cut Country Way? That way you'd have access to the medical buildings there, which would make sense.
Or in time, Frank, just to tweak it even further? Just see what the demand is, where it might not be, and then just, how involved is it to change it slightly later on down the road?
I mean, it's really pretty simple. I mean, this would be an experimental pilot, so, you know, we could make changes as we start operating it.
That was the only thing that I saw to see, just to make sure, because I thought of the two medical buildings that are probably, might make sense for people getting on and getting off. Questions from the board while we're doing this?
Hi. Thank you. With this route, just because I have not seen a GATRA presentation previously, do you provide signage for stops? You know, I see the route, but are there specific stops along this route? And are the signs provided in this cost?
What we normally do on a service like this is operating on a flag stop basis, so the bus could get flagged on anywhere along the route. What we would do over time is, especially in the, when you get into the village and the more heavily traveled and more pedestrian areas, then over time, we would establish stops. But in the beginning, you know, we try to keep it flexible and let people, you know, flag it down anywhere along the route that's for the bus to pull over. The problem of establishing stops, and it really isn't a problem, but it's a process, where especially because of ADA and meeting the requirements for ADA, that we'd have to make sure that, you know, each stop would be accessible for someone with a disability that needs, you know, because even when a wheelchair has some kind of a mobility problem to get on and off the bus. So I think, you know, as this is a pilot and experiment, instead of getting into the cost of doing that right now, you know, we would probably propose doing a this flag stop system throughout the system.
Okay. And I would assume we'd engage the Police Department to know that the pilot's going on, since there'll be some, you know, various stopping along the routes that people may not be prepared to know that that's taking place.
Yeah, we'll work with the Police Department and, you know, in the route layout and...
Tony just said something to me. He actually raised a good point, which is, I guess what we'll do is we'll go with Tricia, talk to Tricia or to whoever. Obviously, I could see why they go up New Driftway, it's to get to the train station, so maybe just kind of looping it around or something, so that people have it. So I mean, we can always figure that out. But I understand now maybe why they're taking that route. But certainly to cover the medical buildings makes sense, too.
Yeah. And then, you know, again, during the times when the train will be coming in or going, we could, you know, move it, just loop over to the train station, so that'll be an easy adjustment in the schedule.
Marty?
So North Situate? I mean, I was just thinking Lincoln Park and things, why is that not in the mix?
Well, I mean, I think when we looked at this a couple of years ago, and again today, the resources right now are kind of minimal. So this would actually give us a chance to try it. I mean, I think if you look at the demographics of Situate, you know, these areas that we're talking about are more densely populated. The problem of getting from this area to North Situate is just the time and distance, and, you know, it just, this loop kind of lends itself easily to having a schedule that would be, you know, be able to do repetitive throughout the day after. And I think, you know, the next phase would be to certainly look at North Situate and tying it into this. But, I mean, our initial recommendation would be to try to, you know, try this, see how it works, and, you know, we can always go back and add more service if that's successful.
Okay, thanks. Tony?
Yeah, I mean, that's, we talked about that a lot, and I think all of us agreed that we want, we want full coverage of the town, but this is just a pilot to go over it. What's the vehicle actually going to look like? Is it one of those, like coach buses that has...
No, I mean, I think to start this, we would probably get a 25-passenger small, like it's a minibus, just a larger minibus.
Right.
Like, use that on the operation. Instead of trying to get something bigger, I mean, clearly, if ridership routes have taken off, then we have, you know, 30-foot regular transit bus that we could put on this. But I think to begin with, a smaller vehicle's a little more movable and, you know, with 25-passenger capacity, I think that would be good to start.
And how many are there going to be in the circuit?
Right now, this would only have one vehicle doing that, that circuit, that route. So it'd be, you know, pretty much, I mean, we haven't finalized the schedule, but I think it would be pretty much once an hour that this would be operating on the route.
Right. And the cost of it, is this fully covered from our MBTA money, or is it going to have to be subsidized by the town as well?
No, I mean, I think what I'm proposing is that we would get some additional state funding, which we are in line to get, and that we would go up to the amount of the town's MBTA assessment now. So I think there's an additional $40,000 of MBTA assessment money that we could use towards the service. Anything above that, we would, you know, we would look to get the state money to do it.
Okay, so how long is the pilot for? How long?
Well, I mean, again, it's...
Like how much money, how much, for that amount of money that you're talking about, are we doing this for a year? Is this six months? Is it...
Well, what I had, what I had proposed was that we would run a more aggressive summer schedule, which would be, you know, Monday through Saturday, probably about 14 hours a day, even add some Sunday service. And that, again, that's a question that I think the board, you know, should talk over and deliberate, whether we want to run seven days a week for the summer. But at least from, you know, maybe mid-June through Labor Day, you know, run a more expanded schedule, and then after that, we could cut back, you know, to a Monday through Friday, like a six to six schedule and a reduced Saturday schedule, and probably no service on Sunday. But, I mean, right now, I... But, um, I mean, right now, I think, you know, doing that, we could probably fund the whole year operation and, and keep that local assessment at that number, you know, that, that is the MBTA, that you're paying to the MBTA right now. We'd get the other additional money from the state to run it.
And are we losing any services? Is this in place of the ride, or there's still, the ride is fine, there's no senior services that we get now that'd be eliminated by?
There'd be no change in what the council agent does now for the town and their operations.
Good, I think it's great. We've been trying to do this for years, so I'm excited to get it going.
John?
Very similar to Duxbury's program, most likely.
Yeah, yeah. It would be real similar to Duxbury's.
All right.
With one vehicle, if you have any vehicle problems, operator problems, what is your, um, availability to get another one here? How do we notify the town? How do we notify our townspeople?
Would have, um, with whatever, whatever contractor we use to operate the service, we'll make sure that they have an additional spare, at least one additional spare equipment for downtime and, you know, maintenance and all that. So, so there would be service on the road all the time. So, we'll, we'll make sure that they have
And do you have a site that you communicate the route and any, like, so say, something did happen, and all of a sudden, somebody's out there waiting at 7:00 AM for the GATRA bus to come, and it doesn't come? How do we notify, or how do you notify residents of that change?
We put all of our, um, scheduled issues, you know, service issues on our website, so it's, it's up on our website as soon as we make any notifications of, of changes. You know, we can certainly communicate with the council on agent if there's issues or any other local department that, that you would want us to contact.
Oh, that's great, then we can just link out to GATRA if this does go live, so thank you. That's really what I was looking for.
Anyone else on the board?
Sounds good.
Gordon or Chris? Gordon?
I'm just speaking on my behalf, no COA, but, um, in light of the fact that UMass survey showed the most indefinite needs for transportation additions in, in, in the town, I greatly appreciate the effort and look forward to the board's liking, hopefully endorsing this, I think would be a great option for a lot of people who don't have transportation, those that are in town, so it's a great thing.
The hope is, is, this is what we're hoping two years ago, because I know the discussion we had, we were like, well, can we get up to Lincoln Park and do other things? And the idea was, great, and then, for whatever reason, it didn't financially happen, and now we're back to it, and I'm like, if this works, I think the board would love to entertain maybe somehow expanding it, whether through GATRA or some other means, so that we could maybe link it with North City and other benefits. I just want to see this get off the ground and get going.
That, there were three issues when we looked at it two and a half years ago. First of all was the size of the route, because it did go all the way up to North City. The fact that part of the, there's two definitive goals with this plan. One was, as Dr. Price said, to provide transportation to the seniors beyond their medical rides, which we do already, so they can get to Village Market, they could get to Town Hall, and we can hit at least the, most of the senior housing complexes. The second piece was to create, uh, a corridor of transportation between the MBTA building and the MBTA station in downtown, and also Widow's Walk, quite frankly, to get people from the Harbor to Widow's Walk, or MBTA people from the MBTA station to the Harbor, at least right now. And what happened was, the MBTA cut the weekend service, and then the cost was very prohibited and would have cost the town money to provide this su, service, because it was more than the cherry sheet net assessment. So, um, what we did this time around, as soon as we found out the MBTA, uh, weekend service was restored back in January, I contacted Frank again, and we met, um, he proposed a route that looks very similar to this, except instead of going down Country Way, it went down the Driftway, and I think it was actually Maura who suggested that that really didn't make a lot of sense in terms of places to stop, especially where it's being flagged, where people can stop. So, um, Laura worked very, very hard on the first draft, and Frank, um, has, um, come up with funding and advocated for us to be able to do that. I think it's always been something the town's been lacking, is providing a public transit service here. So, even though it can't be all things to all people at once, we hope to expand it in the future with this pilot program, and the way to do that is to have people really, really use it. So, um, we'll be looking to other folks like EDC and everything to talk it up. I met with Chris about it as well, and, um, I just am grateful to Frank for all the work. He, you know, advocated for the town to get this extra state funding to do it.
Chris, do you have a question?
Yeah, I'd just like to kind of echo what Tricia just said. We've, uh, on the EDC, we've been supporters of having, uh, mass transit capability. Uh, we're disappointed that it wasn't able to, uh, come to life a few years ago, and we're really excited to see how this runs, and, uh, I think it's gonna be an important connection for the town, so, uh, we're in full support.
Thank you.
So just, what's the next step? Do you meet with us to go over stops? I mean, how is, like, John just had a great idea of a new little twist to it. How do we get all that implemented? Do you?
Well, I mean, if, if you, uh, vote to go ahead and, you know, try to, and get this implemented, then what we would do is put out, we have to put out a request for proposals, to get an operator to actually run the day-to-day service for us. In the meantime, you know, we'll, we'll make some tweaks to the, to the route and to, and produce a schedule so that you guys, so that the board can look at the schedule, review it. I expect that we should be able to have everything ready and start operation by mid to, mid-June, and start operating it in mid-June, you know, get ready for the summer season.
That's great.
So, so, I mean, I, you know, really, other than, than the board tonight, um, endorsing it and, and saying, yes, let's move ahead, um, that's really all we, we need to get from, from you right now, except we'll keep in touch with you as to, as we develop it, and, and you can look at the final route layout, that kind of thing, so.
Maura?
What's the fee? Is it, is it?
It'd be a dollar
Okay.
For, for, um, a regular rider, anyone over 60 and with a disability is 50 cents.
50, okay. Thank you.
Very economic.
Thank you.
Any questions from the audience?
We probably don't need to get this specific yet.
Just, I need the na, I need your name, just for the record.
Quixian Cutler, and I'm with this council on aging.
Thank you.
Can, it's so close, can we somehow loop Central Park House?
I think it is.
Yeah, you go right down that road.
It does, I didn't say
It is, it's looped in there.
They do, they do go there, I apologize, I didn't say.
And I, I don't think it was included in the last one, I'm not sure.
It was.
It was.
Yeah.
We included all of them in the last one, so this time, the only one we couldn't accommodate was in North City.
Okay.
Sorry, I neglected to state that, it does, it cuts into there, and it turns around and goes back. Mr. Dor.
Fred Dor, 37 Indian Trail, could there be, I know in Marshville, uh, the GATRA training of bus stops, at, at least the transport school likes to teach there. I wonder if there might be some consideration to include the schools, so, have the school kids get some things?
It actually has, it starts at Town Hall, so I guess you get the high school, future middle school, although they do have it going into presently the Gates School.
Goes by Jenkins.
Looks like it goes in, probably loops around the horseshoe there, and then out. I don't know, does it hit Jenkins?
Doesn't go down the road.
It's close enough to walk.
Close enough to the top of the hill.
Sean?
Fred, did a lot of students jump on it?
It was, they have a
With students?
But they have a boys' eclipse, uh, special building that we want to go to when they do that.
Yeah.
But, uh, I don't know where, I don't think
Where's Gates, right?
I was just curious.
Phase two.
Places where kids go, I would imagine
So it does get old.
So one of the ways the route's been developed is it's 30, it's a 30-minute loop, so, um, and the original one we did two years ago included the schools as well. We also had to be mindful of construction that's going on, so I asked Frank to loop it past down towards Cudworth, more towards Jericho, because the library's gonna be there, and, um, some school admin and whatever. So, um, I think there's a world of possibility if there's ridership, because the more ridership there is, the more we can expand the route to accommodate other areas. I mean, I would really hope that this is so popular, we can extend it to North City as soon as possible. That's really the primary next goal.
Any other questions? Anybody want to make a motion on this?
Yes.
Figured you would, so. Be the first, go right ahead.
I don't think there is one, yeah.
Yeah.
Move that the board of selectmen approve GATRA's proposal for a fixed route bus service within the town of City.
Second by Mr. Vanyani, second by Mr. O'Toole. Further discussion, seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Frank, thank you very much. I want to say this is a great thing, appreciate it very much.
Thanks, Frank. Thank you.
All right, um, I'll tell you what we're gonna do, we're gonna jump back to the 7 o'clock public hearing, and then after that, we'll go to the, uh, 6:45 discussion and vote on the Coastal Advisory Commission. But seeing that it's, um, a little after 7, try to want to stay to the hearing, because it's a public notice, and it is a public hearing. So this is a public hearing vote on a liquor license transfer for City Package Store. Frank Colepoise, Attorney Frank, uh, Colepoise is representing the, um, buyer.
You know, we should subsidize the census, okay?
All right, okay. How do you get to your, let's see? Frank, good evening.
Good evening.
And with you is?
With me this evening is, um, my client, Eli Huiyas, who is a, um, the sole officer, shareholder, manager, and director of Front Street Liquor, Inc. And they are the prospective purchaser of City Package Store, Inc., more commonly known in town as Bailey's Package Store on Front Street. And, uh, we're here this evening, uh, in front of you as the local licensing authority, uh, asking for your endorsement of the transfer of the Chapter 138, Section 15 Package Store license currently held by Bailey's Package Store, um, and officially known as City Package Store, Inc. Representatives of Bailey's are here tonight, Mark and Miriam Bailey are here, as is their counsel, Andy Colbert, and, uh, I'm just gonna give you a little bit of background, uh, very quickly about the transaction, about my client, and, um, then we'll go from there in terms of questions. As I said, this is, uh, we're looking for your authorization of this transfer as a local licensing authority, uh, for the pledge and the transfer of the license. This, uh, the sale involves the sale of the real estate and the business and, and the liquor license to my client through the transfer. My client, Eli, has, um, been a resident of Massachusetts since 1984. Before that, he, uh, earned his BS in Civil Engineering in the UMass system, has his Masters in Civil Engineering from Catholic University, uh, worked as a civil engineer for, for many years until he just, I guess, became more of an entrepreneur and decided to start and get into a little bit of retail and other businesses. Uh, he, since 1991, he's been very successful in running an auto wholesale exporter business, exports vehicles to Europe and other parts of the world, and Africa and Europe and other parts of the world. He, uh, owned a gas station and an auto dealership for many years, that included a retail store, so he is used to the retail business. And, uh, this is a new business for him, getting into the package store business, but he does have retail and business experience. He's doing this really because, uh, he has, uh, children who are, uh, in their early twenties and, and teenagers, and he's looking to the future and wants to have another business besides his successful auto wholesaling business, in which to have kind of a multi-generational type of business just has, has been the case of the Bailey Package Store. He wants to, uh, keep this for many years and hopefully set it up to his children down the road as they get older. He, uh, Eli meets, uh, the, the bare requirements of the, uh, of the transfer, he's over the age of 21, he is a United States citizen, and, uh, he has not been convicted of any felony or any other crime, so, uh, that's the baseline criteria that the ABCC would look at, and you folks would look at as the licensing authority. But, you know, this transfer is as much about the Baileys, Mark and Miriam and their family business, as it is my client. Uh, this is a, a multi-generational package store that's been in existence, uh, in the Bailey family since 1944, and Mark and Miriam have, uh, been operating it since 1981. And, uh, their much-deserved retirement is on the very close horizon as soon as this can, uh, transfer can take place and this transaction take place. And so, uh, this allows a, a, a good reward to the Baileys for their hard work, it's, it's a very good price that they're getting, and a fair price to my client, and, uh, it'll allow a business to continue in that same spot and the same operation it's been for many, many years, and it has been a success there, and we think it will be success in the future. So it's a good deal for the town, we think, for the Baileys, and for my client. And, uh, as far as running the store goes, uh, the Baileys are not going anywhere, they're staying in City. They have offered, and, and Eli's agreed to have them help him train him, uh, you know, the staff, uh, we're looking to maybe hire the other employee that is, that is a regular down there, if at all possible, and keep him in the store. My client, um, is in a financial position to upgrade the store. This transaction is approximately 50% financed, 50% cash, so he does have the means to do that, he wants to upgrade the store. He's gonna put in, uh, one of those ID scanners, which I know you're aware of, all the clients I've had, and, and works very well, he's gonna do that, and do other things to make the business, uh, upgraded a little bit, uh, in terms of just pump some money into it at this point in time. So, uh, that's basically my pitch. I, you know, I'd ask you to please allow this transfer, I, I think it's deserved, I think it helps the Baileys, it helps my client, and, uh, allows a business to stay in town. And I know that, um, Miriam Bailey wanted to just speak for a moment as, as the seller, if that's okay, uh, before we open it up to questions.
Sure, I have no, that's
I'm Miriam Bailey, um
Might need to come up, Ms. Bailey, only because of the mic.
She just changed her mind.
Oh, come on, don't anymore. Just don't because
First of all, Mark and I would like to thank the board, as well as the people in City for supporting the City Package Store for two generations of Baileys, um, and we're very grateful for that and the time that we've had here. The liquor store, liquor business these days is a seven-day-a-week, three actual holidays a year. He's gonna change his mind when I finish this. And now, uh, increased hours on Sundays. And so, at this point in our lives, we decided we needed the time to retire and to spend time with our, our family. We have children in our homes here, and we really would like to be able to have holidays and things with them now. So, um, when he, when we met Eli, um, we know he's a very successful entrepreneurial businessman, but what we loved the most was his enthusiasm for our store. We have a little different business, and he was just so respectful of what we have there. And so, Mark and I are thrilled to be able to work with him, more Mark probably than me, and teach him the ropes and all that he knows after all these years, so, um, we thank you very much, and hope this will go through.
Well, I just want to say, you know, thank you to the Baileys. I know, um, keeping a business on Front Street is a very difficult thing to do, and you've done it for over 74 years, um, or 71 years, the family has, and you folks have done it for 34 years. That's a long time, it's a long testament to the sacrifices, um, that your family's gone through, obviously for business reasons, but also, you know, everybody, every, Sean can attest to this, you know, it's, it can be very, uh, slow during the winter, and a very long winter, and this past winter's proof of it. And, uh, commit by your family to be down there is great, you got a great store and a great location, and, um, town's very fortunate to have people who are dedicated with the business to do so, wish you folks well in your endeavor. Now, I need to ask your, your client, how do you pronounce your last name? Huiyas or?
Huiyas.
Huiyas, okay, because I know Eli said Huiyas, but, Mr. Huiyas, um, my only concern is, and I've said this with everybody who comes before us, is that, um, selling to underage, and I know Tony will certainly chime in on this if, if I don't say it, but we are concerned. I know that it's a new business venture, um, our biggest concern is, is selling to minors, and, um, because, um, we really have a no tolerance view on it. My recollection, the Baileys have never had one during my tenure, and I really think that's a great testament, um, because it's, it's very, um, it's important, really is for our minors, given, you know, the issues with alcohol and drinking, given the, uh, the epidemic with some of the drug use. So, we really want a stern, um, we'll, we'll take a very stern approach to this, and, um, but that being said, if, if that's maintained, and I understand you're, you're implementing a new technique that I think is fabulous, scanner, um, so you cannot have a fake ID or a license, it's identified, out you go. Um, that's a great step in, in the right direction in making sure that that won't happen. You got a great store, great location, I have no issues with your application, but I, I will say, be very vigilant about maintaining that, because, um, I know that you might that, because I know that you might not be living here. I know based on where you are, you might be absent. Just make sure that you manage it well, because that's the biggest problem that, as I say, if it's a problem that comes before us, it's going to be a problem for you.
Just to add one thing, there is the apartment above, and it's going to be kept vacant, so the plan is where he's going to stay there a lot of the time.
I don't blame you, because it's better than.
Especially in the summer.
So not an absentee landlord, so to speak.
Good views. Questions from the board? Sean? I mean, Tony?
The second time. Is it my mustache or? I'm going to repeat it only because it's so important. It's just the most important thing you can do, and you've never run an establishment before. You're a businessman. You understand the importance of it, and we really will come down very hard on anyone that does that. And the Baileys have never, in all my years, and Sean will attest that longer he's been there, longer I, never had a concern at all, and I, you know, assume that you won't either. But it's, it's just very, very important, and not only for you not being there, but whoever you hire, you know, get them tips trained and get them, you know, up to speed on that. So that's the only thing that could, could really deter your, your success.
Marty?
I won't say it a third time. That's, that's all I'll say.
Maura?
I wish you luck. I mean, it sounds like it's a well-worth endeavor, and I know you're very emotional about transferring your business, so I'm sure you put a lot of care into who you sold your business to. So we certainly can look to that as testimony for the future and obviously share the minor issue and with putting in the scanning equipment. It's worked very well in some other establishments here in town, so really encourage you to do that. So good luck.
Thank you. Sean?
Finally, I will repeat what John said just earlier on. I would just want to thank the Baileys. Being in business here in Situate's tough from Labor Day to Memorial Day. You've done a fantastic job. Thank you. A lot of sacrifices, and I hope you can enjoy your, your feeling. And like Tony said, they're big shoes to fill. We all have children and obviously deep roots in this town, so please take it very serious. One last thing. Mark, 70-something years, that's got to be the third or fourth oldest business in the town? Wilders, maybe PJ's?
PJ's probably is the oldest.
You're right up there.
Right. Pretty neat. Thanks, thanks again.
Thank you.
That's all.
Questions from the audience? Anyone? Motion?
Not on that page.
Move that the Board of Selectmen approve the transfer of the common victual, all kinds of alcoholic beverage license from Situate Package Store to Front Street Liquor Incorporated.
Motion by Mr. O'Toole.
Second.
Second by Mr. Harris. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
There's also a second motion.
Oh, yeah, there is. Away. The pledge. Here. That's right there. Good catch.
Move the Board of Selectmen approve the transfer of particular all kinds. Just hold it to the bottom, all right? Scratch that. Move the Board of Selectmen approve the pledge of license.
Motion by Mr. Vignani.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. O'Toole. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations. Good luck.
Welcome.
Congratulations. All right, moving on, let's go back to the 6:45 discussion vote on the Coastal Advisory Commission charge. And I guess, Maura, is there anybody who's gonna?
Guess me.
Guess it's you. You're back again.
Is that before or after Gatcha in the book?
That was.
It was before.
Before Gatcha.
It was before. Page 40. Forty. That's where it starts, the red line version.
I got 38.
So, don't ask me then. I have a different format than you. So we have before you to continue the discussion from our last meeting and taking into the commentary that my fellow board members had made.
Which was?
Which was, most importantly, too, adding in some of the benchmark and documentation and the work that the Sea Wall Committee has done in the past, you know, specifically referring to the foreshore protection inventory. That's already been done. So, you know, I'm looking at you, Mr. Graham, because I want you to know that it's very important to us to take that, all that work that you've done on the Sea Wall Committee and make it a, a part of this greater commission, because just as Mr. Kelly had addressed earlier, it's not just sea walls. It's about re-nourishment, looking at Hummer Rock and different things that need to be done there in addition to the sea walls. So I, I hope that you feel better once you'll have an opportunity to read the charge here. We also realign the members a little bit to make sure that not only do we have representatives from Coastal Zone Management, but also climate experts like Mr. Kelly. So that was also added in last week. So there are 10 proposed seats on this commission. I'll read them out loud so folks are clear who we, we hope to have a part of this. Our Coastal Resource Officer, a member of the Conservation Commission, a representative from Public Works, a representative from our emergency responders, a representative from the boating community, whether that's fishing or recreational, a representative from the business community, an ocean climate change expert, we left that very broad, to bring in that type of expertise, a Mass Coastal Zone Management representative, a resident from the coastal side of town, and also a resident from the inland side of town, because this is a, a community initiative. It affects all of us here in Situate. So those were the, the biggest changes. You have a red line version in front of you. We also added to, put together some documentation as a result of this, but it's not its sole charge, to create a Situate Coastal Foreshore Protection Plan that will incorporate a lot of the data that you will probably see later on tonight with Kevin's presentation, in addition to any future solutions that we can put forth to address our coastal issues.
How about reading the mission statement that was first proposed?
Sure.
Or I'll read it, either way.
Sure, I can read it. I don't mind. The Situate Coastal Advisory Commission is the town's appointed body comprised of citizens who have education, skills, and experience in investigating and exploring coastal impacts and adaption strategies. The commission recommends, sorry, recommends and advises town officials on actions the town of Situate should take to protect the safety, prosperity, and longevity of the coastal community. The commission educates the citizenry about coastal resources, management, and proactive planning for the overall protection of the town. The commission addresses the issues and policies concerning shoreline erosion protection and control measures. It investigates the existing shoreline condition and makes recommendations based on those findings.
And just, I just want to read it, because I know Mr. Doris here, see, the scope is sea level rise adaptation strategy for the town of Situate, including, but not limited to, floodproofing property, beach nourishment, armoring the coast, wave attenuation, we talked about that last week.
Yep.
Land acquisition and tactical retreat from the shoreline. And then there are specific responsibilities set forth for the commission, correct?
Yep. Which include research, education, and outreach, utilizing benchmarks such as the foreshore protection inventory that we have today, policies and bylaws, taking a look at existing ones, new ones, things that possibly may need to be amended, preparing a documentation for all of us, because this is going to be an issue far longer than probably some of us will be on the boards. We want to make sure we have a plan that has some longevity to it. Address legislative and regulatory agencies, some information there, and then obviously to periodically meet with the board and make recommendations so we can then enact.
Two of the members are standing members. That would be the Coastal Resource, Resource Officer and the CZM representative. Those are the standing while the remaining members would be appointed for one, is it one-year term?
Mm-hmm.
All right. And then.
Obviously can be reappointed. There's no.
Right. And then the other question I just want to point is that committees, the commission, well, first, you're going to establish a chairman and a vice chairman. Is that what the committee would have?
I would think so.
And then the final thing is that the commission itself may establish committees.
Right. And that's the operative word. It's a commission, so it can have a committee beneath it, which we hope to bring the Sea Wall Committee as a portion of that.
And the only other thing I was going to point out is that those committees are not appointed by the Board of Selectmen. They're appointed by the commission.
Correct.
All right. Questions from the board? Anybody else?
Looks great.
Sean?
Oh, great job. Thank you.
Questions from the audience?
Phil Martinari, how are you going to get all these one people all in one meeting? And two, how many times are you going to meet? And three, is the public invited to these meetings?
Well, under the, first and foremost, any board set up by the town, it's open to the public. It's open, it's the public meeting, open meeting law, okay? I.e., whenever a town, board, commission, committee has a, a meeting, you have to abide by the open meeting law. So it's open to the public period. Has to be posted. Everybody's invited to it. So that's the easiest one to answer. Second, when are they going to meet? That would probably be a discussion for the committee members or commission members to decide. Frankly, at least once a month would be a good start. Now, the problem is you don't want to get together and have nothing done, because I've seen that happen with other committees, and then they lose interest. But I think, given this topic, nobody's going to lose interest on this topic, and I think once a month would be a great way to get started. Maybe the committee itself, or commission itself, could then decide, we need to meet more often. That's going to be up to that commission to decide. And then the first question you had was.
How are they going to meet? How are you going to get them all together?
How are they going to get them together? You know, Bill, I always liken it to the same thing with any other committee appointment, you know, zoning board, you know.
You've got a lot of important people that are going to be looking to go to these meetings.
Well, that's, that's the point. In other words, if you're interested in getting on it, these people who we're looking for, they gotta, they gotta commit to it.
Be committed.
We have people who commit and say they're going to join this committee or that trust or this board. They don't show up. The next year, they're off the board. You know, other times, a lot of people show up, just like people show up here and show up for other things. I mean, if you're interested, I assume you're going to, not, I'm not using you pejoratively. I'm just saying, if a person's interested, then why would they go through the process of saying they want to participate? Now, if it turns out they don't, and if it turns out that somebody's not showing up, then, then I would expect that the chair, vice chair would then raise it with the Board of Selectmen and say, look, the person's not showing up. We don't really want the person back on the board for the next term. That's happened.
And we'll appoint a liaison to the committee once it's established, probably at another meeting. So a board member will be a liaison to the committee as well to make sure, it's a very important charge to all of us, to make sure that this moves forward in a timely manner. And basically picks up to where Kevin and Nancy and Trish and the staff have begun is just taking it to the next level. It's really what the goal is.
Rosemary O'Neill, Jericho Rowe. Who's going to vet and actually appoint this commission? I mean, how is it, is it going to be, you know, people going to submit names or?
What I would.
They're going to fall out of the air?
No, no. Normally, what happens with all appointments, okay? All of the board appointments, with the exception of the Board of Assessors, School Committee, Planning Board, I'm missing.
Library.
Library. Those boards are independently elected. All other boards, committees, are appointed by the Board of Selectmen. That's through the, it's not because you want to be all omnipotent. It's the charter. So through the charter, Board of Selectmen will appoint all these representatives. And then, just like any other Conservation Commission, zoning, Board of Health, any other committee, they all meet, get together, and they do the, do the, the job of what that charge is for that committee.
And can anybody submit their name?
Absolutely.
You know, considered for the position?
Yeah.
People with a certain expertise.
We've had most.
Anybody would be considered, no matter if they submitted their name?
Ms. O'Neill, we, I wish Chris McConaughey was here. He was here earlier with the EDC. And that's the Economic Development Committee that we put together about five years ago. The whole point was, we're trying to give them a charge of what to be taking a look at globally, and all different people from different walks were interested in getting involved. And they didn't necessarily have to be that they were like some kind of municipal guru with, you know, planning or development just to get on, turned into, you're like, hey, look, this person's interested from a business perspective. This one was interested from PR, marketing, and so on and so forth. Then we got somebody who was interested in like, you know, planning. It's open to the public, their background, obviously.
I do want to stress, though, we, there is importance, you know, on three or four of the positions to make sure that they're subject matter experts, because that's, that's the issue here. It's a very.
Tim Kelly.
Exactly. I mean, he, he most likely could fill the ocean climate change expert if he's willing to. Certainly would love to take his application and, and review it and appoint him. Well, that's my personal opinion. Have four of the members here. But absolutely, that's a good example.
Example was, when I was on the zoning board, we had the building inspector, Neil Duggan, okay? Neil would come in and sit, and he would take a look at, you know, the different applications. We'd ask him questions from a building perspective and zoning, because that's what he handles. He's also the zoning enforcement officer. So he was invaluable to us. Now, to be honest with you, it was just the five board members. He just came. It's not mandatory, but it was invaluable for us for his expertise. I think it would be invaluable to have the Coastal Resource Officer that was recently hired within the past year and a half now, two years is what I was thinking, to have her, because.
Almost a year.
It's almost. There you go. Sorry. But I mean, it's invaluable to have that resource.
Just seems that way.
You know, and, you know, the same with the, we were talking about Tim Kelly, but the ocean climate change expert. I'll be candid, Rick Murray would be fabulous. You know, he works with Woods Hole. I know you have disagreement, maybe it's politics and stuff, but my point is there are people who are invaluable for purposes of what they can bring to the table for a frank discussion about stuff, okay? But as far as the rest goes, you've got a resident. Now, there's a coastal resident that you're going to want. Then you're going to want somebody upland. Now, it's probably somebody inland. Where? How far? Do they have to go to the West End? No. Could be somebody around here. It could be somebody closer. Who's going to be interested? You know, I think that's what we're trying to do, is spread it out to talk about it. The representative from the boating community, I was kind of interested, this came up last time. I said, well, are we talking about yachts, you know, the big boaters during the summer? Because frankly, to me, that's a waste, because they're only here for three months. How about the fishermen?
I thought it was terrible you to say that. Excuse me.
Wow.
I got, you know, I.
That's my own personal opinion.
Two sides of the world, but, you know, I think boating is important to this. This is a coastal community.
I agree.
The yacht club, the beach club, all, all those things contribute a great deal. I think they should be involved. You know, they, they do have expertise. They know what is here.
And that's a fair, that's a fair analysis, but so don't the fishermen. So I'm saying, we need to make sure that we're going to have both ends of this equation, which is a question I raised the last time, okay? Because this is a fishing community first, I think. But that being said, the emergency responders, you need the fire department, police department. They're the ones who are in the midst of the storm dealing with the stuff when it's urgent. We haven't had that. That's a huge component that needs to be a part of this equation, because they're dealing with it, whether, during the, during the height of it. So, I mean, you can go down, Department of Public Works. Why? Because you're dealing with the actual engineering issues of sea walls, revetments, jetties, beach re-nourishment. So, I mean, we're trying to put together all the key components that everybody sitting around this is going to add, lend some kind of credibility to talk about ongoing issues. Wave attenuation's a great idea.
It's wonderful to incorporate all of that. I think part of the confusion and upset here was the timing of the announcement and the lack of communication with the Sea Wall Committee, who I believe, because I, you know, I live in that area, and I, I think they've been a great resource, not just for me as a taxpayer and as a citizen, but I think they've also provided some very important information to the town itself and have worked wonderfully, I think. So I think maybe that could have been handled a little differently, so. But as long as they're going to be incorporated somewhere, I think that's great.
That criticism's fair enough, and I'll take that responsibility. But I don't want anybody to denigrate from what they've done. It's like, let's take this to the next level. And as I said to Tim and to Bill, a separate committee specialized on Seawall Committee, or seawalls themselves, could be an ideal situation for that commission to take a look at. But ultimately, you know, there are larger issues that I think the town needs to look at going forward.
I understand, it's an entire infrastructure, and everybody's going to recognize the infrastructure. And I think those are the things that, and I don't mean to be critical, to say that from that board, so that everybody understands. It's not like, yeah, I live down there, and that's all I care about. I care about this entire town. You know what I mean? I care about what happens on 3A and Chief Justice Cushion Highway. And the infrastructure here, it just doesn't end because of a seawall. I mean, there's just so much more of situational.
You don't need to tell me that, because I live right around the corner. Hold on, hold on. I know, I live around the corner from you, okay? You're in my neighborhood, and you know what? I totally get it. I'm just also saying that, you know what? This is something I think is going to be beneficial for the town going forward, long term.
I agree with you, but I think it's going to, you know, it's going to be said by you as a group representing all of us.
I live on the West End.
You know, it's not like we're selfishly...
I'm the one that put it forward.
I don't think you are. I don't. I've never said that, and I don't think this board has. I just want to, that may be a perception, that's not from us. You know, I, I think you, I think people are, you know, again, we can disagree about the means. It's the ends that I think we can all agree about. The bottom line is, we want the protection of our town, the best way, the most efficient way. And somebody might say, the best way of doing is A, and we may say, or I may say, I think the best way to do it is B. But ultimately, at the end of the day, we want to make sure, ensure, that everybody's protected. It's just a question of which way we approach it.
You've got a point.
You know what? Nobody said they shouldn't. I absolutely agree.
Well, I think the bigger committee is a good idea, and really, the commission, I think it's, it's good.
Thank you. I'll get to you soon, just one second. Yes?
My name is Doris Searle, Vicente Ocean Side. I think all this is a great idea. I'm just wondering why you didn't consider appointing a member from the Seawall Committee on the Board of Selectmen.
We can. We're going to put the, we can't just designate one person and say, you're it. We're going to put you on it.
I didn't hear it mentioned.
No. The thing is, when we ask people to put your names in, I anticipate probably a good five or six people in this room are going to say, I want on. And they're going to go through the same process, if you want to get on the Historical Committee, or Commission, or if you want to get on, you know, Conservation, or, or the Community Preservation Act, or Community Preservation Commission. I mean, that's the whole process. Fill it out, what are your interests? Why do you want to do it? You're going to be interviewed with the board? I mean, that's what we, that's what we do. If you've, if you've seen it in the past, usually it happens around the springtime.
You didn't say, we want somebody from the Seawall Committee. You're saying, anybody can come out. I'm just wondering, I think it would maybe have been nice to people like David Ball, or people who have put a lot of work into it. That's my feeling. It would have been nice.
This is not a slight to David. I know David's here. And this is not a slight to anybody on the Seawall Committee. It's not a slight to Kevin, because Kevin's on it. The bottom line is, we're trying to take a bigger approach to this look. And frankly, if, if anybody's interested in getting on, sign up, please. You know, we actually, I don't expect it from this commission, but we ask people to join committees and boards all the time. We've got the Bylaw Review Committee that nobody's on, except for one or two people. Frankly, it's a non-functioning committee. But it's because this interest, this is going to be interesting to people. So we ask everybody who's interested, do it. Sign up. We'll probably have it, I would assume, after this gets passed, probably May. We'll probably do it first, because usually we do the appointments after the election, which is going to be at the end of, at the end of May. But I would say, do it in May. I don't mind. I mean, sooner the better. This gentleman had a question.
Eric Damon, Ocean Side Drive. Putting aside some of the concerns about the manner in which the formation of a committee came to light and was communicated to folks, I think another key frustration among those of us who live in coastal areas, is the committee, given its very broad scope, 10-member committee, which I think we'll all agree, here we've got a five-member Selectmen Committee. 10-member committee itself is many, many times considered unwieldy and too many. I understand it's a balance between having inclusion of viewpoints and expertise, but 10-member committees, I think historically, are not particularly efficient. There's a concern about paralysis by analysis here. We've been, I've been a Situ resident for only 10 years. We've been talking about seawall improvements and other foreshore protection for at least that 10 years. The Seawall Committee has been meeting for some number of years, many times without members of the Selectmen participating in that committee. Many recommendations have been made, most of those recommendations not implemented anyway. So there's this concern that a broad scope of a 10-person committee is not going to get anything accomplished in any reasonable period of time. What is the plan? Do we have a date certain by which the plant, the committee is going to have its first plan? Is there any, any date certain by which they're going to identify key priorities that the town needs to focus on in the short term? We don't need another five- or 10-year discussion. We need work done promptly in the near term.
You know what? It is not in the charge, and I have to tell you, I feel, I feel like if we put it in the charge, then we're going to be, we're going to be charged by the public by saying, you're micromanaging, you're controlling it, you're not giving the people who are on the commission the ability to decide. So I feel like we're damned if we're doing, we're damned if we're don't, if we go one way or the other. Frankly, I'd love to. I'd love to say, get the committee together, commission together, get started, report back in about four or five months. You know what? At the same time, talk with the DPW, Kevin's going to, I assume Kevin, or somebody else from the DPW, engineering's got to be there, because we're going to want shovel-in ground projects going forward, not just for walls. Beach nourishment's going to be a big one that we're doing up in North Situate, in the Minutet area. It's a $6 million, I think, proposal that we're trying to get with the federal government. A lot of sand coming in. So we need people who are going to be interested in that. Now, that may not be interested in people who are interested in walls. I, I hope not, because I think it's a really important thing, because maybe beach nourishment is a big issue that we can maybe do in some of these other areas in front of the walls. But I mean, that's what I expect the committee to do, which gets back to Mr. Martin Ari's question, how often they're going to meet. I think it gets into the interest. Your criticism about paralysis by analysis is a valid one, and I agree with you on that.
I'm not...
No, 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 but I think that's valid, because sometimes I see larger committees, because the problem you run into is, some people, some people get on and they don't do anything. I hope that's not the case, given the subject matter. And the other thing is, it's a commission. The reason why we designated a commission, because we're keeping it in perpetuity. This isn't something that we're saying it's a pilot program, you know, come to meet with us. There's some self-autonomy there, by even giving the ability to create subcommittees in essence, not appointed by us. Again, trying to get people who are involved, who are interested in this topic, to kind of take with this and go. From my standpoint, sometimes that's a major issue, because some committees can go off on a tangent. We, as the appointees, don't have the authority to deal with the subcommittees. But I think that's something that's important for the commission members to understand. There is some, some autonomy that I think is valuable, so that they can go without worry of, you know, the Board of Selectmen kind of doing knee-jerk response, which I know a lot of people seem to think we do a lot. I don't know if that answers your question. I know you're saying, what, timing? I mean, I'll give you, I'll be happy to. Get the committee together, presumably by June, if we can vet everything else quickly and say, fine, come on in here, this is what the charge is, is what we're looking for. But that begs the question, what's the direction you want to first start out with? EDC had that, and it took them a few years to begin to define certain areas that they wanted to focus on, because there were, people were disagreeing which area to go to. And now, after three or four years, they're gone. But I think...
That's a concern, because the Seawalls are already, Seawall Committee's been existing for some number of years.
I was just going to say, you actually have a like...
Hold on, hold on, Ms. Kern.
They've made recommendations, folks have been behind these recommendations, and for the folks to sit here for three or four more years before action is taken, that's going to be a bit...
I, I agree with you. The one thing that I think's important, which is what I had said the last time we had this, which was, that you need to include the work that has been done, which primarily is the Situ Coastal Foreshore Protection Plan, and, and the, the 2011 foreshore protection inventory. In other words, take the work that's been done thus far, that we can begin to implement it, so that we are beginning to focus on walls. Now, the whole wall issue, we could have a long debate on that, but the important thing is, there are still critical walls that are failing, that are town-owned, that we can easily get started on. Let's identify them, let's figure out the amount it's going to cost, which actually we do have, which the committee, commission could actually start with. Now, the public walls are another issue, because of the easements, which are going to take time, as we can already find, we've already found out since August of last year, getting easements. That's a whole separate issue that the commission can address. But I think, right away, you can address these issues. FEMA is going to be coming back, presumably from Juneau, that we're going to have a discussion on. We haven't gotten any indication yet, but that's $8 million, of which six will be paid by FEMA, and then ultimately, we've got to come up with $2 million. It's a perfect opportunity for the commission to say, you got to address this. That's not walls, it'll be, I think it's rip-rope, Kevin, if I'm not mistaken, around the cliffs, stonework. But that's important to address, too. So I mean, another member or two, a subcommittee, whatever, the commission can address this issue. And that's when I said, the $6 million plan in North Situate, it's another issue for sand. I know Mr. Dorr was talking about wads. I actually think that's a great idea, you know, and what are we going to do with that? I think the commission should look at that wave attenuation. You know, I think, but again, you know, that's what I would anticipate.
That brings up...
Hold on, Mr., hold on, I just, I know there's some questions. If it's getting into a discussion two weeks ago, please don't.
No, no, I need to clarify something.
All right.
Can I just comment to Eric?
Just one closing comment for me. I would like you, I urge you to consider putting some time constraints, some milestones into this committee. I understand the balance that you need to strike between autonomy and interfering, but having an open-ended commit, committee of 10 members, disparate groups, experts, logistically, that's going to take quite some time to make any progress. I think that's certainly my fear, and I think that's other folks' fear.
I just lost it on my computer. It says it will report to the Board of Selectmen. I don't think it says anything specifically as far as timing, right?
No, it doesn't.
It says it will report back. So...
Periodically meet with the board. But, can I?
Go ahead.
Just, I mean, two things, Eric. One, that'll probably be their first charge, right? They'll have a couple of meetings, come together, set kind of a curriculum of what they want to accomplish, and then come back to us. And if they say, we'll get something done in five years, then we'll have the ability to impact and say, well, that's, that's not acceptable. And secondly, just because we created this committee, doesn't mean that the town has ignored seawalls or for that whole period. I mean, that's a big piece of Kevin's day, and will continue to be that, you know, just as much as it is with the Seawall Committee and without the Seawall Committee. You know, we still have a seawall problem, the town is still working on seawalls, and I would guess, one of the first things this group is going to do is set up a subcommittee, you know, that has a portion of, you know, the Seawall Committee looking at it. But don't think that seawalls are going away. We're still working on easements, like John said, getting money from, from the government...
They are going away. So I'm not disparaging anyone. I know Kevin's participation has been highly valued by, by the committee, and he's been kind of the beacon for some of the initiatives and proposals that have come out of that committee. So, again, I, I want to avoid paralysis by analysis. We can't afford a five-year or 10-year plan. We need to start taking steps to protect this town, the essence of the town. It's not just about seawalls, I agree with that, but there are some things that can be done in the short term. Thank you.
Hang on. Mr. Dorr had a question, and then I'll get to you, Mr. Graham.
What are you going to do about, if there is anything to be done about, people who would be considered an expert, but also are related to a company or a business that has an interest as well?
All right. So Fred, let me, let me just do this, okay? Okay. Because I don't want to personalize it. Here's the thing, okay? What happens, hypothetically, if somebody says they want to get on the committee or a board, okay? Then the first thing you got to do is, you got to disclose if there may be any direct conflicts of interest, and if not, even indirectly. And presumably, let's assume some topic comes down, like, let me give you an example. Let's assume somebody's on the Affordable Housing Trust, and they happen to be looking to try to get affordable housing in town, and maybe they might be a real estate broker, and there's a property for sale. Then what you normally do is, you create, unbeknownst to that person, you create a Chinese wall. Person says, I'm not going to discuss anything, I recuse myself, out I go on that topic. So anything that deals with that, the other members must create, insulate it. You don't talk about it, okay? And the person has to disclose it, put it in the minutes, and you're out, you're done. That's, that's generally what happens. The only time it would become a major problem is if, shall we say, you know, if the town had, shall we say, a boiler committee that only relies on fossil fuel, i.e. oil, and then Sean Harris says, you know what? I want on that committee, you know, it's solely what he's dealing with, it just couldn't happen. So I mean, my point is, that wouldn't make any sense. So, we don't have one, by the way, and John's fine. Mr. Graham.
One of the biggest things we found that was a problem in financing the seawalls, and I don't find that there's any requirement for somebody from either capital planning or finance committee to be on that committee. I think it's real important.
I think, you know, I don't know, I'll, I'll table it with the others. I can give you my two cents on it. I think, you know, if it's, if it's a capital expenditure, then you got to look at, okay, what's the capital expenditure for? It goes through the, the process of the capital plan, which is appointed actually by town administrator, and actually the moderator, the capital committee.
Some of the representatives, other committees, and the others are by the moderator.
Missed that one, Ms. O'Neill. But my point is, is that I think that's important, that if there is a capital, it has to go through that committee to see whether or not they're going to finance it, whether they think it's a capital expenditure or not, which gets you into the bigger picture, the bigger cost, which maybe it's not, you have to deal with what I think are debt exclusion override issues. You know, when you're dealing with seawalls that large, you're dealing with multimillion dollars, so then you got to say, guess what? You got to, you got to come up with a plan, here's this section wall, we're going to replace it, this is what the cost is, and this is the reason why. And then say to the voters, this is what we want to do, we want to bond it for 20 years. Now, there is the issue that, there's another issue, you could say, well, maybe there are betterments. That's something I think commission could take a look at and say, do you want to do a betterment system? Do you want to do graduated? There's a lot of potential ways of financing it. I wouldn't necessarily designate a capital person. They're numbers people. Do they really want to get on and start talking about, you know, coastal issues? May, I don't know. If they want to, then I would invite them to join as one of the other representatives. But that, that's my only reason for saying it. As far as financing it, I think that's where the commission would play a valuable role of taking a look at, these are some options, and this is what we're looking at to do this section. Obviously, you know, the board, I think that's our duty to say, we think this is the best way of financing it, and then the voters decide. John?
That person that he might be referring to, could that be the Coastal Resource Officer, or the person from DPW, or like if Mara wanted to be liaison from this board to that commission, she's the pipeline. Should educate them about how to finance, or if that's what his question was, she'd[1547.21] was. She'd be the money person. And between all three of them, be talking, communicating through the town administrator. I think that's what he was talking about. Who would this person be?
I thought you were saying you want to designate.
When you present something, you say, how are we going to pay for it?
Right.
And we need somebody to figure out how to pay for it.
I got you. I misheard you. I thought you were saying somebody designated specifically as a member from capital planning.
Well, I think there should be somebody from the finance background to be on that committee.
I think one of those people could do it, or a combination of all three.
And I think a lot of the financial proposals come out of those discussions, and Nancy and Kevin have access to a lot of the different FEMA and MEMA programs and grants that we can apply to. But absolutely, I think it's a part of the discussion that has to have. I hear what you're saying. To John's point, you know, the town share, how are we going to pay for it long-term? I think it's going to have to be segmented out, and obviously someone is going to have to be looked at during some of those initial meetings, as maybe that's a piece of a committee charge. Okay, we need a finance committee to research other ways in which other areas or other towns have financed some of these projects. And why isn't Situit getting their piece of the pie? And how can we help advocate those positions more strongly at the state and federal level? So I think the capital planning committee, I mean, that's appointed by the moderator, used to evaluate the capital plan that's put together from all of the boards. I'm not sure that's the right representative, but to Sean's point, whoever the liaison is can certainly facilitate some of that information and build that bridge and that gap.
Questions on the board?
Well, the only thing I'd add to that is, we want you guys to conceptually think out of the box and to figure out how to solve this problem. I don't think you need a numbers guy saying, no, we can't afford that every time you come up with an idea. You know, so that's my two cents on that. You guys think freely, do your expertise and figure out what you can do, and then we'll figure out how to pay for it after the fact.
We hold you to that?
Well, I'm not saying again. I mean, ideally, we'd like to do everything, right? I mean, I think you tried to, you sounded like we only say, how are you going to pay for that for the seawall committee? And if you come to our meetings, you'll see we say that to almost every committee. So.
Let me ask a question of the board. I know that Mr. Damon had mentioned about reporting back and having some kind of like, under Section 7 Board of Selectmen, where it says periodically meet with the Board of Selectmen and other town boards. What if we were to add some language that says, "The commission shall report to the Board of Selectmen," I was going to say biannually, or at least to...
What about quarterly?
I would say quarterly.
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 That's a good idea.
All right. Quarterly. To report to the Board, to report to the Board of Selectmen, BOS, as to its progress and to provide...
An action plan or something.
It's six-month, or it's action plan. It's...
I'd say within the first quarter. They should be able to have a...
At least an initial action plan, your first steps.
Within the first fiscal, fiscal quarter? Is that what you're saying, or?
At the first meeting.
All right, so...
In three months, they should be able to get an idea of where they want to go.
Quarterly to report back. All right. So that would give, putting feet to fire and saying that there's going to be back every quarter, there's going to be some kind of, and I say reporting, I would say, put in writing, if they want to come in certainly once or twice, I don't care. It can come every quarter. But I'm saying, at least that would give a, this is the report, this is the update.
Uh huh.
All right. All right.
Do you want us to amend that and then come back and present the final?
I'll make a motion and add that sentence.
Okay.
All right. Other questions from the audience? Anybody else? David, you're awfully quiet.
I want to say it right now.
Okay. Fair enough.
So move the Board of Selectmen approve the charge for the Coastal Advisory Commission, adding to Paragraph 7 that the commission report to the Board of Selectmen quarterly with an action plan and updates to that plan.
All right. Motion by Mr. Vignani?
Seconded.
Seconded by Mr. O'Toole. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any nay? All right. Thank you very much. More, well done. Thank you very much.
No, thank you for your input to the residents.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Would it interest the chair and the board to rearrange the floor for items in the fire department overtime to the sea walls?
John? Ask them to...
To the port for general implementation, to go first, or to the audience that's hopefully scared of that?
The oldest left.
Just left. I think people...
Or not. Either way, I'll be sitting.
Well, that's why we wanted to do it now, so folks could actually learn some stuff about what we have been doing.
You want to let them know?
Yeah.
Kevin? Yeah, thank you.
All right. So we're going to jump to the presentation of coastal management and foreshore protection with Kevin Cafferty, for those people who are still here, who might be interested. And then we're going to take a break after that. All right?
So that's on page 113, if that helps.
Really too bad they're not staying.
Hi.
Hi.
So we are...
Where is it?
A little faint.
Do we need to shut the lights on?
Yes.
Is that it?
Yes.
That will be good.
Folks, do you mind if we turn the lights off? Everybody, well, I'm only saying that just so that you can see. All right. See this, but also if you need to get up, you can get, you know.
My apologies, Mr. Chairman. There are some graphics in the slide that look better in the dark.
Yeah, no, I agree.
For purposes of seeing the larger graphics, we'll turn the lights back on.
Can we get that on TV, too?
Yep.
Thank you.
I'm just going to give Mr. Cafferty a moment just to put his items up so that the camera can catch them later on.
Mic is yours.
Thank you very much for rearranging the schedule so this could happen, so that the people that have been here all evening don't have to continue to stay and listen through a fire overtime presentation. Nancy Durfee, the Coastal Resource Manager, Kevin Cafferty, the Director of Public Works, and myself, Nancy Holt, the Finance Director, Town Accountant, are here tonight to give you an update on coastal management and foreshore protection. The issue of foreshore protection is one of several infrastructure issues that the town faces, and realistic effort needs to be given not only to it, but to all of the town's aging infrastructure. In 2010, the town started to identify, quantify, and address these issues through a five-year capital plan. The capital plan is a proactive management tool that identifies the capital needs of the town. It is through this methodology that capital projects are vetted, prioritized, and brought to voters for approval. The process is not meant to address every town need immediately, but to recognize, quantify, and record that need. With that work done, the town is in a position to apply for grants, structure financing, and look for alternatives to help offset the impact to the taxpayer and to move forward with these needed projects. We are balancing requests from 30 town and school departments that also have important justified and costly needs. So it's a very difficult balancing act that we now tread. We wanted to take this opportunity tonight to review the efforts of the town towards coastal management and foreshore protection. Concerns have been raised that the town is not addressing foreshore protection adequately and lacks a strategy to tackle this very serious issue. That is far from the truth, and I hope that you will be encouraged after tonight's presentation by how much has been done, what is in the pipeline currently, and the future plans. We expect the presentation to take approximately 20 minutes, and due to the wide scope of the project, we respectfully request that you save your questions until the end, as we may address some of them as we go along. See if you already get brighter in the room. Our agenda this evening is to go over a background of the existing foreshore protection, the existing programs for mitigation that are in place, types of the foreshore protection, which some people may not be aware of, hard versus soft, the process for foreshore protection repairs and improvements, some of the cost benchmarks, so we can get a better idea of how much these items cost, the status of the current foreshore grant requests, and foreshore protection projects current and planned. Just as background, there's approximately 29.3 miles of coastline, including rivers, depending on how you measure. It's about eight and a half miles of existing hardscape protection, which would include revetment, riprap, and seawalls. Over 100 years ago, the need for easements was recognized and incorporated in many of these legislative acts authorizing local county and state funds for erection and repair of foreshore structures. Unfortunately, in many cases, these documents were never recorded at the Plymouth County Registry of Deeds as required, making it necessary to now redo much of the administrative work. There are more affected residents in these areas now, and their property does not look the same as it did 100 years ago, making these easements difficult, time-consuming, in some cases impossible to obtain. Current state and federal funding sources, including the state's special, state revolving funds, seawall and dam repair fund, the one that Representative Campbell was so instrumental in getting, require easements. So it will continue to be an ongoing obstacle for the town as it continues to address its foreshore issues and aging structures. And I know, the chairman knows how much I love to do research. He gave me a research project, and I'm off and running. So we did go back. I went down to the Registry of Deeds to see if we could find any easements, find any trails. We did find a few little nuggets in the wind, but we were looking, I was looking back at special acts of legislation back to 1900, and they did require easements in these acts. They hearken back to the Metropolitan Parks Commission and its creation, how it was to record land takings in 1893. And I think it was, they had 60 days to record them at the Plymouth, at the Registry of Deeds in the affected area, and unfortunately, none of that was done. And I know Kevin has done research, talking to people that worked for the MDC, which was precursor to the DCR, the current legislative authority, and they said that a lot of these documents were still in hard copy, but they were destroyed. We think it was in the Blizzard of '78. They were stored down in the basement of a building in Halt. So unfortunately, a lot of this work was done over 100 years ago, is completely lost and has to be redone, which is creating a problem. Now, in 2011, as a little bit of background, there was a comprehensive inventory of foreshore structures, which identified problem areas and rated conditions. And I want to turn this over to Kevin and to Nancy at this time, so that they can go over that. I think, Kevin, you wanted to discuss what the inventory did specify.
Yeah, we just, we've gone over the good areas and bad.
Kevin, you need the mic. Sorry.
Sorry about that. We had done a full evaluation with an engineering firm up and down the coast, evaluating all the structures as they go to the different scapes, hardscapes, and we've made some repairs as that's been going. It'll be four. We'll see that further in the presentation.
Well, part of my charge is the community rating system, which was initiated in the community since 1991. To give you some indication as to how difficult the community rating system is for communities, the state of Massachusetts only has 12 communities participating in this program. And of the 78 communities, of the 78 coastal communities, only eight of those are participating, as we are one of them. About $203,000 in account, in a calendar year have been saved by this program. We are Class 8, and that means that homeowners in the special flood hazard area receive a 10% discount on their flood insurance, and those in the non-special flood hazard area receive a 5% discount across the board. This program is, takes a lot of intense time on the staff. We work as a team through the DPW Planning, Conservation, as well as the CRS Committee and the hard work that they put into this process. And we also have the Sands Committee as a part of it, the Emergency Management Team as a part of it. All of these pieces play into the community rating system. So the Situit has one of the highest ratings in the state. It's a 1,173 points that we have acquired through these activities, and that is a, is a big portion to be proud of. The hazard mitigation grant elevation program began in the community in 1997. We have 69 successful structures have been elevated at the tune of $3.8 million in grant funding to residents. This is a reimbursement program. There are some years where funding is not available, as in the case of 2011, when no funds were appropriated. But it looks as though this year may be a year that we'll be receiving funds. So we are having, so I'm going to use this as a, like a kickoff for a public meeting that we're having, on April 23rd. For those homeowners who are interested in elevating their homes, we're going to have an informational meeting, and we'll have the Building Department, Conservation, Planning, myself, and DPW, and the Board of Health there to answer questions about how that process takes place. There's a lot on this slide. So to just give you an overview, the community rating system and the hazard mitigation grants together, as the two programs kind of are somewhat interrelated, as they enhance our public safety, they provide an avoidance for our economics and the disturbance of business, as well as any losses they may incur, as well as damage to property and public infrastructure, protects our coast and protects our environment, and also provides, you know, more safety to the homeowner as well. So these programs are significant, and the time and efforts that go into them to keep them running are quite, quite an effort. So for all that participate, they should credit themselves for that work. Part of this slide also talks about the sea level rise and climate change studies that we've been involved in. In 2011, MAPC, the Regional Planning Agency from Metro Boston, participated with the communities of Ducksbury, Situit, and Marshfield on a, an adaptation study, which gave us strategies. And then 20, in 2013, we had the Kleinfelder Report that actually gave us some kind of visuals for what sea level rise might look like, and kind of also enhanced the strategies that were presented to us through MAPC. We recently received the EPA grant, which we'll be working on our rules and regs, which is a technical assistance opportunity. And we've just received another MAPC technical assistance grant for, to begin to build a matrix of priorities, which kind of will phase us into a cost-benefit analysis. So it's, kind of gives us the next heads up as to how will we plan, how will we pay for, how will these items be prioritized? So these will be very important opportunities for the community. So if you live in an area for a long enough period of time, you begin to see the subtle changes that occur, such as, you know, higher tides, more inundation in the salt marshes, more frequent, more ferocious storm events, more precipitation, and snowfall. And then also, you see a warmer ocean, which will change the types of species that are around here, such as the great white shark that was noted off of Ducksbury. And those things will continue to occur. So planning in advance will only help us be able to learn how to adapt to our changing environment. So all of these pieces kind of work simultaneously together. And a little bit of an update on the FEMA flood maps, I think most of the community realizes we're in an appeal phase on the FEMA maps. There has been a scientific panel that has convened. They have 150 days to do a review and write a report, and that report will go to FEMA. FEMA will have the final determination as to how it will proceed, and then the community will have an opportunity to review that and then determine whether or not there's an appeal that they would like to take it further. It seems as though around the end of May, we should begin to see some information coming back in that direction from the efforts.
Types of foreshore protection. There's man-made hards structures, which are your typical revetments, ripraps, seawalls, breakwaters, jetties, and even the way of attenuation devices. There's also natural or soft forms, which are dunes, berms, beaches, and coastal banks. And then there's also a mandatory treat buyout, which was proposed by the Mass Coastal Erosion Commission Reports and Recommendations. Process for foreshore repairs and improvements. Multiple permits may be needed to be obtained from local, state, and federal authorities, which are quite expensive. Less onerous for work within the footprint of the existing seawall. So, for example, down at the lighthouse, we were able to rebuild that stone wall there. We minimized the amount of permits because there was an old wall there, and we were able to keep it in the same footprint. Granted, we built it a little bigger and a little stronger, but we were able to work within that same footprint of the wall, and that saved us a lot of money in the permitting. If you can keep the wall in the same location, it's cost-effective. Easements necessary for work on private property. 2010, the Oceanside breach was not repaired until 2012. I think the board remembers the issues we had with getting the easements to go in and enter the property, actually do the work on the property. Limitations and our outright restrictions on new construction are imposed by the state and federal regulations. Obviously, down in Humrock, along Central Ave, it'd be a lot easier if we could run a seawall right down along the end there, but it's not allowed by the federal government or coastal zone management. So it's, it's just not attainable. We can maintain the seawalls we have, but we cannot build new ones. Strings are attached to FEMA funds, as well as long delays. The FEMA funds, as I know, I've explained to everybody, they will give you a certain section of wall to fix, even though the section right beside it might be damaged, and it makes all the sense in the world to fix it at the same time. They're only going to fund that small section, that section that they give you. Nothing to the right, nothing to the left, nothing above or below it. So you're stuck working within the FEMA restrictions when you do that type of work. Costly lengthy permits for designs, which are often out of town control, and they limit, and a limited construction season affects the, affects the work that we do. Obviously, we don't want to be pouring concrete in the middle of December or January, when the weather's frozen, we can't pour it. It'll freeze. The other issues are with the storms. When the storms come in, we kind of want to be buttoned up by that point.
Time of year restrictions based on the seasons?
There can be time of year restrictions, depending on the seasons and plovers, or fish, or wildlife, or anything to that effect.
That's right.
We certainly have restrictions due to species habitat and as well as access. It's certainly very difficult if you have homes all on the seawall, and you don't have an open area which to access. You may be driving heavy equipment down the beach from a town-owned lot that's farther up the beach, past, well past where you, your work area is. Or as Kevin has mentioned to me before, you may have to build some type of a temporary road to bring that equipment in. And I'm sure Mr. Harris can testify, heavy equipment doesn't move very quickly. It's heavy equipment for a reason, and you're driving it across sand. And in some of these places where there's very limited shoreline, you have a very limited window when the tide is out, when you can move that equipment. So add on to the fact that you've got to now have rush hour with equipment marching down the beach. It shortens the amount of time that it can actually do work, from what you would assume would be an eight-hour workday to maybe a three- or four-hour workday. I know that Kevin wanted to highlight exactly who is the permitting authority for a revetment or for seawall work.
Do you want me to, I know that the Army Corps requires if you are anywhere below the high tide mark, as well as the marine fisheries. And then for anything along the seawall, it would be a notice of intent through the Conservation Commission, and then a review at the DEP, sorry.
No, not at all. We'd like to review everything. One of the issues, and I'll use for an example, when we were doing work around the cliffs, at one point, we had some access restrictions, and we had to go all the way across to make it be, I don't remember, you know, who was on the board at the time. I know you guys remember, we went all the way around the outside of Third Cliff to reach the other side. We lost access to the beach over at Edward Foster at one point, and the equipment spent half the day just getting to the site where it needed to work, and then had to work its way out. Which, it doesn't sound like a big deal, but we're paying for that equipment. That travel time is part of the cost of us doing business on making those repairs. And the permits, exactly, we're going through the different permitting effects now, as we're doing the beach work for the beach nourishment, which I plan on having the engineer, Ian Coastal Zone Management, making a presentation to this board, hopefully within the next month, on what the status is. We are probably going to have about $350,000 in engineering costs, just to dump sand on the beach and spread it. Fortunately, the state is picking up 90% of that cost. But something as simple as spreading sand on a beach, the costs get very expensive when you go through fisheries and all the different groups you have to.
Yeah, the consultant will be here on...
Yeah, the consultant will be here on May 12th.
May 12th.
In front of the board.
Better memory than me.
I just want to make that a little bit clear, because I think a lot, there's a lot of misconception that it's a project, it's voted, it just moves forward. It's not that simple. There's a lot of red tape literally that has to be done through in order to do that, because our, our shores are very well protected, and for good reason.
The permit costs can vary, as I started to touch on. Design costs, engineering costs are roughly about 10% to 12% of the construction costs of the projects. Seawalls can vary from $4,000 to $6,000 per lineal foot. We had a location where we repaired the breach on Oceanside Drive, which was a smaller section. The cost came out to close to $8,000 per foot. The reason is the proximity of the houses. In Situate, a lot of the houses were built right up on the seawall. The seawalls were built first, and then people came in, saw the land, they built the houses right up on the seawall. The three houses in that area, it was a very difficult task. The houses almost needed to be fully supported in order to replace the wall and take the wall out and put the new sectional wall in. So that's the areas where there's no land in between the seawall and the house. Revetment and riprap are always dictated by the accessibility and the scope, and we're also looking, as we said, into beach nourishment, which we've brought up multiple times.
I think on the Third Cliff, it's especially difficult to access that revetment.
It is.
These are some of the grants. I know it's very difficult to see, so I'm going to let Nancy highlight the ones that are, that we've been awarded.
FEMA has awarded us the runway damages for Hurricane Sandy, $237,000. The CZM grants for the beach nourishment are actually two grants. And the first one was for a study of the environmental analysis of the, of the beach area, as well as the beginnings of the permit phase. And then the second was actually just going to be for the permit. So that's $118,000 just for the study, and then another $241,000 for the actual permit phase. It really could take about two years just to get to the permitting phase. Even though we've begun the process, what we've been saying is that the executive order of Energy and Environmental Affairs provided us with a $2 million grant and a $2 million match from the, from the town for the area along the Ocean Drive. We've had some difficulties with easements, but we are quickly closing in on those, and we hope to begin that process very shortly. Nemo and Sandy, we are still pending the funding from those two storms. There is a meeting that's coming up shortly to discuss what might be missing, so that we can move that forward.
If I can clarify that, Nancy. Those amounts there are the amounts that we actually submitted. It doesn't mean that they've agreed to pay us that. That's just an estimated value that we put together of what it would cost to do that work. We requested a lot more money in the road repairs, and we didn't receive it. But we did receive some money, which was a positive.
And for the actual nourishment, and the materials for that project will be $750,000, which is pending as well. And then MEMA has, and Juno, for damages on Oceanside Drive and the foreshore damages during the storm in January, which one, the, Juno storm has not been identified yet. There has not been a presidential clarification on that, so we're awaiting that as well. And the MEMA will not be awarded to us.
The following two slides are specifically about the FEMA money from Hurricanes Sandy and Storm Juno. So many storms, you kind of begin to lose them all. But I think it's important to note that these storms were in 2012 and 2013, and we have submitted claims, but we don't even know yet if our claims will be granted. And that meeting that we're having is on Thursday. So Kevin, I will turn it over to you, because this is our meeting.
Okay, and these are the areas that we've submitted for potential damage at the different locations. Minor Beach, Glades Road, Egypt Beach, Sand Hills, and then we also get into the cliff work. A lot of, a lot of the main damage that we had was in the cliffs that took an extra, a lot of extra abuse and damage. So those costs were submitted. Nothing on those have been approved yet by FEMA, but we did submit for everything that we saw there. And, oh, I'm sorry, Nancy.
I was just going to say, if you are finding that this slide is too hard to see, we do also have it on a placard. We can turn the lights back on, and Kevin can make his presentation based on a larger item. So we've had a voice discussion.
Everybody see that? Is that, do you want the light on, or is that okay? Fine?
Sure.
All right.
Okay, well, now it'll get tricky. I gotta see it. Basically, what we did is, we put together the areas that, that we've worked on and of what's been permitted so far over the past couple of years. The first contract is Contract 9FS07, which was a small FEMA project for $127,000. And that was at various locations. It was actually four locations up along the coast. Unfortunately, I couldn't fit Humrock into the slide, but there was some work done at Humrock under that first FEMA project. So that's all been completed. The second one, we just recently did some stone repair at Minor Beach. We went out there and did some riprap repair. That was in this general area. There's a small blue section here. It's hard to see. We just did routine maintenance, spent about $25,000 with rental equipment out there cleaning up the riprap down below. This next section is for the beach nourishment area, which we have $359,000 from the state that we've got. And at this town meeting, we've also requested $100,000 from CPC funds. Technically, it's, it's my opinion, we're bringing a beach back. People are going to use it on the beach, so we should be able to use CPC funds for it. That's a perfectly legitimate reason to use them. The Musquashka berm repair, we have $75,000 we spent after one of the storms, going out there and doing a full repair on that. That $75,000 is mostly material. We did a lot of the work with our own equipment out there. George Cook and a couple of the other guys with Mike Breen were out there, and they leveled off that berm and brought it back together. The next section is the seawall grant we have from the DCR for $4 million. And that's this section right here. And that's $2 million from the state as a direct grant, and a $2 million loan from the state. And that's, we're in the process now of getting easements for. We have not got all the easements we need, but we're getting closer by the day. I think we will be able to do a 530-foot section if we obtain one more easement. We have one easement that's outstanding that's in the middle. The next one is Contract 082501 for $474,000. And that was the repair of the breach work, right at Oceanside Drive, at number two, Oceanside Drive. And the next one is Contract 11FS42, which is for $717,000. That's a stone wall we built right up by the lighthouse to protect the parking lot and protect the lighthouse. After that, we have the seawall design at Edward Foster Road, which we spent $39,000, I believe that says. The design is complete. We're just waiting to finish it up. We are finishing up. We're waiting on the, the homeowners have agreed to give us easements. We don't officially have them on paper yet, but once we do, we will proceed with construction and get that wall section repaired.
The funds are in place?
Excuse me?
The funds are in place?
Yes, the funds are in place. We, we have the money to do that work this year. And the last contract is 11FS02, which was for 768, and I believe that was another FEMA project. So that's the, that's the activity that's going on up and down the coast as we speak with seawalls.
Now, as we get into the future projects, we want to bring up this map that shows some of the flooding areas that are happening along Oceanside Drive. And I'm going to turn it over to Nancy, because Nancy understands there's so much more than I do, and can explain that the basins and what this overwash is causing.
There's, there's two areas in Situate called the basins. There's one along the Avs, and then one south, kind of Wampanoag area, where it fills in as the ocean overwashes the top of the wall. And so these areas are important for a continued part of the seawall protection, and I believe Kevin laid that out in his plans, is, as you go to the areas where there's the wide-open areas, where those areas can be, the seawalls can be raised two more feet, will make a huge difference for the people who are behind the seawall but in the basins, not necessarily right on the seawall, but they get flooded as well. And there are, you know, there are regular studies that are done constantly about how much water is actually coming over. They put up a guide to see what that water is. The storm reporters, Jason Bertner from CZM and myself, go out and take a look at these areas after and during storms. So it's something that we pay very close attention to, because so many homes are in these basins, and some of them are varying degrees of, of income levels. So it's important to pay attention to those areas as well.
And based on that, the next slide shows the work that DPW is currently in their, what is in their current plans. And again, if you can't see this because it is color-coded, we can certainly turn off the lights and go to a larger external map.
Kevin's got the, the red light, right?
Yeah, I'll get the red light, so I can go through this all. This is right at number two, Oceanside Drive. I'm all set with that.
Sorry.
This is right at number two, Oceanside Drive, 24. That's the small area that we just repaired. This red area shows the area that we got the grant for, the $4 million, to replace this wall. Now, we have some people that are not interested in the grant, so we're shrinking that area a little bit. But our overall plan was to replace this whole sectional wall, because this area floods, and it causes flooding all throughout this whole area. We're planning on raising the seawall up two feet and doing a complete replacement in this whole area. This area right here, which is in the green, and that runs where Doris's area is, that's around 50, I'm going to say 50 to 68, or even 46 to, 48 to 68. And it's scary, because I thought I knew everybody on Oceanside Drive, but I didn't recognize Eric, so I take that back. But that's, that's an area that we have a design permit out for, to have a new seawall design there, and that's one of the grant applications for the next round of grants that we're going to go after very hard. Future seawall projects are in this section here, in this section here. We'd like to bring this all up and connect up to it. And we're hoping these sections will be easier, because there's open space behind them. There's no, no houses in that area. And we feel by, or at least I feel, by raising this entire area up, we'll be, we'll be protecting a lot of these houses with the way the water's coming in. Some of these seawalls were rated a little higher. At one point, this seawall was a B, but during this last storm, we had a major undermining of that wall, and we actually had a crack in the wall because of the undermining. We had to send an emergency contract out there, have a contractor out there, and fill that entire area in. So these walls are a liability, even though they might be rated better, they, they don't have the proper drainage behind them, and they can be undermined at any time. So in our total plan of where we're looking in the future, we're looking to rebuild this whole section here, and build that going forward.
Any estimated cost?
We, I did an estimated cost. I just took the footages here for the different sections. Say this one was 805 feet. If we had a price of $4,000 per foot, it'd be roughly $3.2 million. Our total is about $13.7, I believe, for cost-wise to do that. And that's under a perfect world at $4,000 a foot. It does concern me with the proximity of the houses, that the cost could go up if we have to do one, depending of a house, depending on how these houses are.
Now, as Kevin pointed out, especially in the red area, which, you know, we didn't have approval at town meeting, it's taken so long to work on those easements, and we're getting closer. There's still one resident that they're working on, that would be able to allow them to do that 500-some-odd-foot run. But that also delays design. If an easement is reviewed, they now have to change the design of the wall to build around that person. That also creates liability, and which we now have to involve counsel as to how do we deal with that, you know, property owner, how do we advise them of what this could mean to them if we raise the wall around them.
And if I can step in, Nancy, that, that delays the entire project, because it's not just the design stand. I can't put the finishing touches on a design, because I can't go to Conservation on our next step to get it approved, to do it, until we know the actual work that's going to happen.
So Kevin, let me ask you a question. The red, the red one's the, that's the $4 million. The blue one underneath that, the, the gap between eighth Ave and 11th Ave, that area, is that town-owned wall? And I understand, is that, is that actually a town-owned wall?
I'm getting, I always get these two confused. This is town-owned, this is Goldston property.
Correct.
And Goldston has, working with the attorneys, they're giving us easements for that whole section.
Okay, so that's, that's through the Toll Brothers and that.
So that's through Toll Brothers.
What about the other one? The other town-owned wall is the purple one, the gap right there?
Purple section right here, but not all the way, because you've got houses in this area.
Where Doris's house is.
That's the other Doris. We have two Dorises, one here and one here.
So conceivably, we could have an engineering on our own wall in the future, for the purple, at least.
Yes, and that would be, that'd be a simple step. You know, one of the things that I'm holding off before I put any other engineering contracts out, is, once we get the wall on Edward Foster rebuilt, which I hope to do this season, see what the costs go for that, and then, and then whatever funds need to go into it, we could go back and do the engineering for something to that effect.
Another, but why would you wait for the cost and not do the engineering? Because it's two different things.
No, we could, we could do both. We could do both. I just, I don't know how much it's going to cost, just for the Edward Foster. I want to take our available seawall funds and put it at it.
The chairman brings up a good point. It makes sense to do those two areas marked as future seawall, because they have large open areas where easements aren't going to be necessary.
Right. And then you can get state funding, if you can get it. If not, then we can deal with the issue through town.
So it makes that part of it to move faster, and you're connecting all of the new seawall, which all creates a break for all of the homes that are quite far distant away from the water, that are facing the flooding because of the way, of the way the water comes in. And something that Kevin has discussed with Nancy and I, is some of the storms now have changed their direction, and I think that's something you should mention about how the waves are now coming at that area.
Yeah, they're just, they're hitting in different locations. They're, they're coming in, and they're, and Dave could probably tell us more on how the, how they've changed over the years, but they're just coming in and overtopping these a lot more frequency. And some of these areas, the actual high tide is coming, or even, the high tide's at the base of the wall now. Before, we used to have a, a bit more distance, or more of a beach that was there. But now, it seems the ocean comes right up to the seawall at high tide.
So, and just in summary, I know everyone in this room can hear me, but maybe not at home. We apologize, we went a little bit over, but we just wanted to highlight some of the things we went over tonight, that there actually is a comprehensive plan in progress for foreshore protection. You've seen it here tonight. The Board of Selectmen tonight voted a Coastal Advisory Commission acting as an umbrella to help research, develop, and assist in a coastal foreshore management and protection, because it is more than just hardscape or soft structures. It is an integrated system. We want to point out that the town's continued support of our new Coastal Resource Officer, Nancy Durfee. I think we can all agree in this room and at home that she serves a very vital position, and we're so happy to have her here with her expertise. The active pursuit of grant opportunities. There are a number of grants that the town has received and other grants that the, that the town is pursuing, much more than just the seawall and dam repair fund. There's a lot of available revenue out there that we're trying to get to supplement the local efforts, because this is a very expensive infrastructure issue. There's ongoing aggressive lobbying with the state and federal officials for partnerships. Hence, we're having this meeting on Thursday to try to shake the FEMA/MEMA tree and see what money might fall out of it. And we will assign funds to repairs when they're fully authorized. It's not always an issue of not having the funding. Often, it's an issue of trying to get through all of the red tape to get to a point where you need to ask for funding. And I think sometimes, maybe people are concerned whether or not seeing something on the capital plan for construction. It's because of the amount of lead time and work that has to go through to even get to the point of construction. Construction, I think maybe Kevin might disagree with me, is the easy part, because you've gotten through all of the permitting, all of the easements, now you just have to put it up, or pour it in this case. Or pour it in this case. I think we can all agree that foreshore protection is a costly problem, but funding, as we pointed out, is not always the issue. It's, it's key, but it's not always the, the item that is holding us up. The town can only spend funds to make repairs to areas for which design and easements have been done. The $4 million SRF funding package is proof to the issue that the money is not the only stumbling block when it comes to addressing foreshore protection. In that case, easements have certainly been an, an ongoing obstacle. Additional foreshore projects can only be done at certain times of the year, as we, as we pointed out, due to weather constraints of tide, temperature and availability of daylight, which create a truncated construction season and in some cases, a truncated construction day if there is difficulty with accessibility. And it is through the capital plan process that we can move forward in a methodical manner as identified projects are designed, easements are obtained and construction costs quantified for the allocation of funds. The need to address the town's foreshore protection is real and it should be done as part of the overall coastal management for the town and expectations need to be managed based on the mitigating factors of access, limited construction season, as well as cost. I know we've gone on and on tonight and I certainly want to turn it over to Nancy and Kevin if they have any final comments and certainly, I'm sure the board, I've seen you busily writing, so I'm sure there are questions.
Put the lights on.
Yeah, go ahead.
Well, I hope everybody's awake and we didn't bore you with these, these details. This came across my desk today and I'm, I'm not too sure where it came from. And it shows seawall damage and some of the seawalls falling. I, I just want to point out, I believe this is Greg Eaton's property right here, which is part of the red area that we had up on this plan right here, where we have easements and we've got a grant actually to replace this section of seawall. So, this is, this is an ongoing issue. This picture here looks to be at 8 Oceanside Drive where we were delayed in making the repairs because we did not have easements. We received the easements, I think around December of that year and another section broke. We're acting on it. We're gonna try to get at least a patch in there. We've, we've done a patch with rock, but we're gonna try to get a concrete patch up this year and I'd like to think that would be done before July 4th. And there's also a section here in the back which shows Edward Foster Road, which is one of the areas where we still don't have the easements for, for that particular property. It's forthcoming, but once we do, we will be acting on that seawall also. So, some of these look like they've been hanging around a while and it's not necessarily the case. You know, we have to work with people and people have to understand what we need to, to go in and do the work.
Greg Eaton's property, the first one, is part of that Oceanside project that will be going forward quite soon.
And both pieces of Edward Foster and that property, the funding is already in place.
Questions from the board?
Can we see that?
Marty?
Yeah.
So, I have a question on the...
It's on wonderful my desk today.
The roadway damage money from Hurricane Sandy. What roads and what, it says awarded, but I don't believe that was the amount of water, was it? And if it was, what were the roads that were involved?
We had Central Ave, we had Glades Road, we had a small section of Rebecca Road and we had a section of Oceanside Drive.
Okay, so as a breakdown on that, I, I know that someone, maybe you had mentioned to me that the Glades Road money was not what we had thought it was.
We requested a substantial amount more than what we received.
Okay.
And the town also voted at, I think it was November special town meeting?
I believe they allocated, the town meeting, $64,000 was allocated.
Town share because with FEMA funds, it's 75% of the town.
And that's strictly repairs, right? It's not what we hoped for originally?
Um, we were hoping for more money, but we'll, we'll go forward with it and see what needs to be done. We're doing an evaluation. We lost a lot of gravel underneath the roadway on Glades Road in a couple of different areas. It's something that's gonna have to be addressed and we've got a couple of roads that we have to address this year.
When I went out with MEMA and FEMA during, after the storm event, for them to do their review of each of the sites that were damaged, they do a rough estimate of the, the area that was affected. They don't do the whole area, so they'll just give you a footage of wherever the hole was. But like Kevin had said, it's sometimes much more than that that you need to fix, you know, but they only give you that small amount of money. And they do just take down those dimensions and give you the money for the dimensions and that's it.
And with the water project on Glades Road, we did do a lot of additional paving. We gave the contractor a change order to do additional asphalt paving in some of the different areas out there to make the road more passable. Unfortunately, the ferocity of the storm this year, we didn't, it didn't hold up the roadway.
I have a couple. When you put together your application for grants, is there any coordination? I'm sure there is, but what type of coordination, communication comes from us to Senator Headland, Representative Cantwell, to alert them that this grant proposal has gone in? Do we coordinate this?
We get letters of recommendation.
They get the original grant and then they do the support letters and then we follow up when we haven't heard.
Okay, because that was my question, you know, with this $8 million that's been sitting out there from FEMA, and I understand it's federal, you know, what actions have we taken to reach, you know, Senator Warren or Senator Markey?
We were there on January, February.
No, I know, but have we done any follow, like, is there anything additional that we could do to further escalate it on their agenda to see if we can get more timely reimbursement? Because it just seems like a lot of money's sitting out there that we haven't seen yet.
Chief. We received the memo from the follow-up on that from Senator Warren's office asking how we're making it out. So, we actually went to MEMA and FEMA to try to fill in the gaps. And since they heard that they're coming to town, it's supposed to be last week, we got postponed to this Thursday. So, MEMA and FEMA will be in town specifically for Hurricane Sandy and possibly Nemo to find out where, where we're lying short and what we gotta do to get funded.
That's terrific. Great.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Questions?
Um, the piece of seawall that we have, that one easement remaining, what kind of support from us do you need, if any, to help convince this resident to provide us with the easement so we can move forward and not risk losing that money, which I understand, we received a letter that there's no guarantee that it will be available in fiscal 2016.
Absolutely. The one homeowner is a sensitive case. She's a recent widow and she is not home most of the time and our contact information has been poor. So, we have what we think is a, is a good phone number for her. We've been by her home and left notes on the door and we're hoping to catch her this weekend.
Good.
So, it, it should happen fairly shortly.
So, it's a contact issue, not necessarily?
Absolutely.
So, can we, can we build around it if it turns into a major issue?
We can, yes. That'd be the idea, would, would have to leave it down.
You don't, but you don't want to do that. It's, it's back to the drawing board if that's the case.
And I, I do believe this homeowner will be willing to sign. She was just nervous, being recently widowed, unable to make the, you know, a decision. And now that she knows that her neighbors are all in support, I'm sure she will also want to support it as well. I don't think it's going to be, I think it's a non-issue.
Okay.
And it's just a matter of contact.
Sean?
When you, just, if you could give me a general description, when you've given up an easement, I did it once before myself, you know, people are afraid they're giving up value on their properties. But in reality, what's it really? It just allows us to get in, do work without having to go to a town meeting for maintenance, really, right?
We, we actually take, we take three easements. The first easement is the land that the seawall sits on.
Okay.
So, that's, that's actually there.
So, now it's my, my description on my deed shrinks?
No, it's just an easement, no, you still own it, but, but now, now the town at least owns, they've built the structure or the structure's owned by the town. You also give an easement that if we ever have to go out and do any maintenance or repair work to it, that we can go out.
All right.
And the other easement is from the seawall to the mean low tide or mean high tide, wherever the property goes, that people can use the beach. People can walk up and down the beach in that area, which nine times out of 10, people said people use the beach anyways in front of my house and I'm not that worried about it.
And it's not giving them access through their property to the beach, it's just walking in front of them.
No, it doesn't mean you can go through the property and knock on the window when you go by. Hey, do you have, can I use your shower on my way out?
No, I think that's an important distinction.
Yeah. But Doris says you can use her shower if you ever cut through to get to her beach.
Thank you, Doris.
So Kevin, I have a question. At least on the seawall between, I don't know if it's Wampatuck, I think it's Wampatuck and 11th Ave, that's the area that's with no homes on it. Do we know, I know you know the rating. I don't know what they are. What, are they infailing? Is that what they are?
Um, would, are you looking at the section where the houses are?
No, I'm, I'm looking, no, I'm not looking at Gulston. I'm looking at the purple, which is the one that's south of that. It's closer.
I believe that area was a B.
It's where no homes are.
It's where no homes are, but that was, that was the area, there was some damage over there during this last section of storms.
I was gonna say, if it's rated like an F, then why don't we just engineer it and get it ready and tee it up? Because there are no easement issues. If it's town-owned wall, then it's a lot easier to deal with.
No doubt. You know what, and we will, it'll be engineered and we'll be ready for it.
I mean, part of the challenge is what we're doing is we're in constant design, design and engineering mode if we know we have the easements to do it. So, we're constantly researching deeds, constantly knowing where we can get stuff shovel-ready and have it designed already. But even, again, even though we have over $8 million in the pipeline from the last four years, I would remind the board that there are two engineers in the Department of Public Works, of which this is one component of all the other job duties they have. And so, we've, but we've made it a priority and we contract out a lot of the, almost all the engineering, but it still needs to be managed and it needs to be managed well. And Dan Smith, our engineer, when we are actually doing this revetment work, is on-site every single day during construction to make sure that the contractors are doing what they should, similar to the water pipe work. So, you know, we don't have five people administratively in the DPW to oversee all these projects. Nancy's been a great resource to help shepherd a lot and I think will in the future, but that's another thing to be mindful of, that, you know, we're also running a town in a lot of different areas too.
And when we talk about easements, we define a certificate of title, which is registered land, which actually contains the type of language that should have been recorded. So, the language that was, is on the certificate of title, which is all we needed, it had been done correctly 100 years ago, was telehand hereby registered as subject to the rights of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts and the town situated to maintain the concrete seawall across the same as shown on said point A. One sentence. If it had only been done, this would be a much simpler conversation.
And if I can also comment further, I, I'll be honest with you, when we first had the meetings in, in the seawall, the seawall committee's been very helpful with this. They've been attending meetings with residents. Doris hosted a meeting at her house requesting easements and explaining everything, explaining the town's position. I, I was amazed to hear people thinking the town is just out to, you know, to take their property and, you know, steal their beach and, and I just, I couldn't believe it. I was, you know, there we are offering to put up a brand-new seawall in front of the house and protect the property from the winter storms that we've had. We, you know, if we had everything in line, we could be shovel-ready right now. We could be doing this work and I was just stunned.
Well, I, to their defense, I could understand why. You know, you got property rights and it's like anything, once you grant an easement of some sort, you're diminishing your property rights over it by giving whoever's going to come over the right to be able to do so. And so, to their credit, I, I can see why there could be trepidation. There's no doubt about it, but...
I'd just say something to that guy. There, there probably are several people, but the majority of people in the coastal community, away from the coastal community, do not feel that way. And it's unfortunate that those are the names of the people, of those comments keep coming up. The vast majority of people all over, from Egypt up and all over, Hammurah, all of us, we all have the same passion, what, what to accomplish here, to protect our infrastructure, to protect the community. That's what we're waiting for and, and that's what we want to happen. And it hurts me, just because I'm so passionate, that there are people that feel that way and those are the ones that get the word, get the publicity, get the comments made, you know? But there's a strong community of people that all want the same thing, the situation, all of situ, a safe infrastructure. Thank you.
All set.
Sorry for that one.
Oh, all set. Tony?
Yeah, segue's perfect because clearly the town wants the same thing, right? Clearly, there's a plan. Clearly, there's money there to do, do this work and there's efforts going towards getting it done. You know, a lot of money. It's an expensive venture, obviously. There's not, you know, you quoted one project out of $13 million and you took the $4,000 number where it could be eight, you know, it could be double that. So, it's, we're dealing with a big project and it seems like we're chipping away at it. I just looked at this thing, you know, and then you, then this propaganda goes out that makes, makes it believe that nothing's going on, the town's against us, we're not, you know, we're not doing anything, there's no plan, when clearly there is. And it looks like this is being mailed to everybody in the town. I mean, I don't, I just don't understand where the disconnect is. You've heard these, these people talk about all the details of the plan that's going on and, you know, we've gotta be a united force towards fixing this. You know, clearly, somebody mentioned it earlier, there's a money issue. There is, right? There's not $100 million that we can just fix this overnight. Of course, there's other issues with easements and time and, and weather and all this sort of stuff, but clearly, the town sees it as a, as a priority and are working towards doing it. And I, I just wish we could work together towards getting it done and not have to, you know, sit at a town meeting on Monday night and deal with people reading something and really not knowing.
Some of your propaganda on that is a little bit harsh, in my opinion.
Well, it's there.
Well, okay.
Mrs. O'Neil, Mrs. O'Neil, Mrs. O'Neil, there is a process. You can't just blurt out, okay?
I'm sorry.
All right.
So, I mean, that, that's my take on it. I think, I think there is effort going to get it fixed and it's taken a big stretch of, of seawall and making a big dent at it if we can get forward. And you'll see huge progress in the next couple of years, I imagine, you know, if these things come together. So, good job, you know, for you guys and all the work that's going into it.
Thank you. All right. Any other questions? Yes?
The report, is it accessible on the town's website or will it be accessible?
Yeah, we'll put it up tomorrow. We just, I don't, we didn't have it till tonight and then it'll go right up.
Maybe just one last comment on the mailing. I was partly involved in that mailing. I don't think there's anything inaccurate in the mailing. And the mailing is intended not to shed a light on town management as much as it is to influence the two-thirds of the town, it's not paid by coastal residents, of the importance of, of the coastal area economically to the town in terms of property taxes. What is situ without the beaches and without the coastal areas? How important are the beaches and coastal areas in the essence of situ to all of the businesses in the town who depend on traffic from Memorial Day to Labor Day? I think that's the point behind the mailing and I agree that it shouldn't be characterized.
Well, I'll read two sentences to you. Consisted the adequate amount of money to capital plan each year. This has not happened. Right? So, we just went through...
It's not in the capital budget. It hasn't been...
No, but it's, no, no, capital is, capital is capital. Capital is everything.
It's been in the capital budget every year since 2011. It's been in the cap...
2011. There were many years where it wasn't in the budget. The amounts are paltry relative to other expenditures. Go ahead.
Yeah, and then just, if delays, if repairs are delayed another year, we'll, we'll fall hopelessly behind. So, these are just comments that just seem to be unproductive as opposed to productive. I think this is a productive meeting informing people and I just, in reading this, I just think it's, you know, it's, it's not necessarily all for one moving forward. That's my opinion. All right.
I've heard so much negative, I mean, if you go online or anything, there's so much negative against us that we hear from people online.
Hold, hold, okay. You know what, I, I have seen it, social media, I, have you seen the negative stuff about us? I can only say, you just gotta read it and say, take it as a grain of salt.
The issue is what I said earlier with Mrs. O'Neil and everybody, we have the same goal here and the goal is to protect the town, the infrastructure, the question is, how do we approach this and how are we going to do it, okay? And seawalls are one element to it, there are multiple facets that we need to attack. And, you know, I think, I just don't want people walking out of here and I know people in TV land and social media would disagree, but this board has not, certainly in the past six years, turned a blind eye to it. We've actually attempted to try to approach and to deal with these issues. And maybe like we did with the water issue of trying to appropriate a little bit here or there, that approach is not the right approach and we finally turned around and said, guess what, we're gonna spend twenty-two million dollars to fix the water problem. Maybe that's the approach we're gonna have to approach, but that's the whole point about the commission, to kinda sit down and say, okay, what is it going to be? But if that's the case, then sure, we've mentioned this before, we're gonna have to tee this ball up and say, what's the cost, how are we gonna approach that? Is it gonna be a five million dollar approach and say, okay, let's fix two stretches of wall and then another five million the following year, trying to phase it in and say, can you do it each year the way we're doing the water? I'm not sure you can do it that way, maybe you can, put all the resources towards engineering and then approaching it in a five-year plan and try to replace all these types of walls. Again, I think that's the one thing that this board always gets knocked, I know the town administrator does, and it's unfair, but.
I just wanna say all.
Hold on, Tricia, hold on, Tricia. So it's very passionate, she's passionate, he's passionate, I'm very passionate, I know you folks are passionate, Dave hasn't even said a word and I'm sure he's gonna boil over the moment he walks out of here. The fact is, we can all agree that the seawalls need to be replaced. The town-owned seawalls, I think, are the first starting point. The public walls on private property without the easements create problems that can't be dealt with immediately, but that doesn't mean we forsake them and ignore them. If those are a higher priority, then we have to queue them in and say, fine, let's approach these homeowners. Let's use the, the people on, and I won't use their names, but use Edward Foster or use your stretch on Oceanside as an example of how people were scared, worried about easements, because frankly, I get it, I understand the legal ramifications of granting some of you an easement. You lose a little bit, but you gain a lot, we think. And I think collectively, that's what we need to be able to do as a group going forward. But, again, it's not that we're not saying no, I mean, if we had the money to say, spend fifteen million dollars, I'd say, do it right now, but then where's it gonna come from? You know, we, we talk about it and you say, okay, it's gonna come out of the operating budget. You know, I know somebody might say, well, then you gotta take two-thirds from the school, one-third from the town side. Well, nobody's know like that, then what do you do? Do the capital? This year we did nothing, level funded on capital, with the exception of the enterprise funds. And the reason is because we did a hundred million dollar override with the school, the public safety building, and so we're saying, do you wanna raise more taxes? Because that's what we'd have to do with the capital, we'd have to raise, do, go out to bond and get the money and then raise your taxes. Or do you do a debt exclusion override? And so you might say, maybe that's the smartest thing.
If you lose twenty-five hundred houses, you're gonna have to raise taxes by a third on people as well.
Mr. Damon, please, you're interrupting me, okay? And if you want the last word, I'll give it to you, okay? But going out and saying you're gonna lose twenty-five hundred houses is a scare tactic, to say to people, you're gonna lose it, okay? Yes, our home's potentially in jeopardy, there's no doubt about it, that's why the walls are there, okay? These walls have been around for a long time, their useful life is at its end and that's fair to say. So how do you wanna approach it? Do you want us to say, put a debt exclusion override and say, raise how much right now to solve it? Because I don't think anybody here could say what it is exactly, we could add up Kevin's numbers and say thirteen million dollars just for those stretches. If that's what you want, I'll be more than happy to say, let's put it on the, on a town meeting and go forward and do a debt exclusion override with a vote. The thing, though, is you don't know what walls, how much and so on and so forth, you gotta have the plan, which is what you'd mentioned about with the commission. We need that, because going to town meeting and asking people for an open-ended check is not gonna be beneficial to what I think is a valid cause. I think it's gonna get shot down. If it's not a town meeting, it's gonna get shot down on your funding source, which will be an override, which means you have to go to the ballot. And that's gonna get the people on social media saying, what are you talking about? What's the plan? What's the wall? Are there easements? Do you not? What's gonna happen with the money? You know, so this is why I'm saying it's a very complicated, and I, we're all in agreement, it needs to be fixed, which is why I think working together is better to try to sort through this than not.
And I think we agree, I think our primary concern is speed at which we're gonna work together.
We can work.
The plan for action is complicated.
I, you know what, I can tell you right now, let's try to figure that out, because I think, I agree with you on it, it should be sooner than later. Folks, thank you, I know it's nine o'clock almost, I'd like to take a break before our, Sheila, and then what we'll do is we'll reconvene, okay?
Thank you, Nancy.
At this point, I'd like to adjourn for about. If we can, I'd like to reconvene now at nine twelve and at this time, we're going to deal with discussion, review, annual and special town meeting related items. First one is a review of the fire department overtime. Nancy Holt, again, the finance director and town accountant with chief John Murphy. Good evening. Thanks for waiting.
I just wanna go over a very brief presentation, and I mean brief, not compared to the last presentation that just went on for over an hour, this one is really brief. We just wanted to give you a quick update tonight on the overtime in the fire department as it is something on special town meeting and we wanted to go over, I wanna go over some common causes of overtime, the impact of those on this fiscal year and some historical context of overtime in the fire department. There's a lot of triggers for overtime and I presented in your material, materials, a chart and it shows the police department and the fire department and some, they have very, since they're both public safety departments, they have very similar overtime triggers. And this lists very common ones and the number of plus signs you see is how it has impacted the department, so the more plus signs you see, the worse it has been for that department. So some of these trigger mechanisms can be controlled better than others.
Really, that's a negative, should be a negative, not a plus, right?
Plus, plus, we're just adding it on.
Okay, just checking, okay.
So, some of these triggers include sick leave, injured on duty, vacation, personal time, other which would be sick leave incentive, comp time, any other thing, I think jury duty, anything else that we didn't wanna, you know, that wasn't that frequent, bereavement leave, storm-related causes, court-related, which is basically more for the police department than for the fire department, vacancies, training, promotions and academy training. Now vacancies and illness, both injured on duty and personal, have been contributing factors, especially affecting the fire department this year. The police department has a limited or light duty provision in its collective bargaining agreement, which allows for an officer to return from full disability status to limited duty status at the chief's discretion, which can eliminate overtime to cover that open shift. And that option is not currently available in the fire department collective bargaining agreement. Vacancies are very problematic as the board has dealt with that issue over the years. As hiring is done through a civil service process, it's very labor-intensive and time-consuming and this process is extended, in the example of the retirement of an officer, for example, lieutenant, which is then filled through, hopefully, an in-house promotion. That creates two hiring processes, you had to hire for the person who retired, which was an officer, and then you, if it was in-house, you have to now go back and hire for that frontline person, whether it be patrolman or firefighter paramedic. In addition to that, any new patrolman or firefighter paramedic hires that the town does do, they still have to attend the requisite police or fire academies and there's a waiting list to get into those academies, as well as the training time. So you, it could be six months easily before newly hired employee is actually on the job and filling those vacancies. So it, it takes a lot of time, so the hiring process is just the first step in trying to resolve some of that. I also just did an analysis of overtime as a percentage of regular salaries and as you can see, the police and fire are fairly consistent over the last six years, that it ranges around the twentieth percentile for the amount of overtime as, as a percentage of regular salaries. And that's significantly more than, say, some of your DPW divisions like public grounds or highway. And that's because in these cases, if you have a public safety person call in sick, you may need to, at the discretion of the chiefs, fill that position so that a piece of apparatus can be used or a specific patrol plan be implemented, whereas maybe in a DPW, the shift, the crew just runs a little short that day and it's not as critical. So we also just wanted to, I just wanna sum up, I'm gonna let the chief speak for himself, that the overtime budget has been increasing annually since 2011, which was the first year of goal-integrated budgeting. The overtime budget has been going up, it went up ten percent, eight-point-six percent, twenty-point-five percent, five percent, two-point-one percent, and it's going up another twenty-two-point-two percent budgeted for fiscal sixteen. And we do wanna point out that since fiscal thirteen, the collective bargaining agreement did expire at the end of fiscal thirteen, so the overtime budget is still going up even though we're still at fiscal thirteen rates for that particular bargaining unit. The training overtime for the fire department is unique in that that budget is completely separate, so overtime, training that incurs overtime is a completely separate budget and that's not included in these figures, it is included in supplemental information that I gave you just so that you could see it, it's about between fifty and sixty thousand dollars a year. And the key is management for overtime, tracking of the cause, reacting to trends and making Both the police and fire chief are now actively tracking the triggers of their overtime shifts and I know Chief Murphy's gonna get into that, and this enables them to better manage these costs. Being fully aware of the cause of your overtime allows them to manage the budget as well as the personnel, if there is required to have some type of personnel action to deal with a specific type of trigger. I do wanna bring to your attention that you do have those extra materials in your presentation packets in the, on the tablets, if you have any questions. I certainly don't wanna go over them tonight, but they were there, just there to provide a little bit more background information. But I know the chief has prepared an analysis for you about where his overtime is being generated from and the steps that he's put into place to, to master it.
Thank you, Nancy. And it is, it is management, we do the best we can, but much of this is actually contracted, so you have limitations on how you can manage your time. The only thing you can try to do as far as, some of this has been on sick time, the focus, and we sit down, we try to inform the firefighters, if their sick time is high, we sit with them one-on-one, we sit with them as groups, and that's in transition, we're working on this since chief judge started this last April and May, we worked together on this, so it's a challenge, I know it was a challenging winter for everybody, but on my sick, on my sick leave, I add it all up, forty percent of my sick leave is accounted by three personnel that were long-term sick leave. Stuff happens, when you're on duty, you get disability leave, when you're off duty, something happens, you get injured, it happens. Three per people, three firefighters account for forty percent of all my sick leave tally, so something that, the good thing is they built the sick time up over years, so if something like this happened, they have the time available. So we're able to build up to up to a hundred and eighty days, all three of these people, one was forty-six days, forty-six shifts, another thirty-two and another eighty-nine, and the third one with eighty-nine now has just retired because he can no longer work as a firefighter due to his disability, so did not wanna do that for twenty-one years in the job, great firefighter, Jack Donahue, I commend him for his service over the last twenty-one years, a great guy, great friend and a great firefighter, so. A lot of that, all the rest of it's contractual and the fifteen days a year is contractual, but you try to manage that as best you can. We've gotten better, we're going in the right direction. Is it still needing management? Of course it does, we're still working on that, it's ongoing, there's limitations on what you can do there, too, so. Still working on it, but I guarantee it's going in the right direction, we're doing everything I can, we can to try to, to try to manage that. Majority of this is contractual and a lot of this, the vacancies we've talked about, as Nancy mentioned, we attempted to hire back, starting in June, three additional firefighters that's just started, they just graduated from the academy, two of them hit the floor next week and another will be on the floor for counting a shift strike first week in May, started that process in June. And then now, next week, they hit the floor as accountability. So that's how long it takes between the hiring process, screening them, interviewing them, and the biggest lag is the fire academy. It's about six months out, now there's such a backup, six months out, it's a ten-week program, so we get them back ten weeks, we bring them in a few weeks early, do some training, in-house training, they get back, couple more weeks training on the ambulance and some need a little bit longer, but overall, it's a, it's a eight-to-ten-month turnaround between somebody retiring and getting someone on the floor. So basically, everything creates a vacancy, vacation days, nights, earned nights, sick time, whatever it is, it's all vacancies. And we have vacancies in the lineup, it's the same thing, it has to be filled. So, and I mentioned to you earlier in the year that this year would be not great, you know, do, we had two vacancies in the summer, we had the chief and a lieutenant leave in September, four vacancies, and then we have another one leaving now, and then you take into account that we had a third of the, forty percent of the sick leave, those three people got hurt. So it's been a challenging year, going forward, I know the town administrator's been working on how we're trying to fill those gaps, as Nancy mentioned, when somebody gets promoted, somebody else fills those spots and we're trying to hire two additional firefighters, interviews next week, and that'll get us back to complement where we're supposed to be at forty-six firefighters, so. And that's gonna take some time, they probably won't hit the floor until probably Christmas time, but we're doing the best we can, what we can control, to move forward as quickly as we can and get those positions filled. So, like I said, the majority is, is sort of out of our hands, it's actually contractual, the time off everybody has, and then the time it takes to get them to floor, so. We're doing what we can, we're managing it, we're attempting to sit down and consult when needed, when needed, so, but we're doing everything we can to help out, just to stay within that budget.
Good. Questions from the board?
Just a couple, yeah, on this spreadsheet, are these days or shifts? How does this work?
The shifts, so it could be days and nights, some of them broken down to days, days and nights, so that's basically a shift, a ten-hour day or fourteen-hour night is broken down, too.
Okay.
So basically, you can tell how many vacation days, how many nights, and that's on a weekly basis and the totals are at the end on how that's calculated, so we went back since July first to April first, on every, every shift that's been taken off is calculated in there.
Right. So just numbers that jump out to me a little bit disconcertingly, so there's eleven sick days, six shifts a week is what you average.
Yeah, you could say that, it's about, you know, if you get forty weeks so far, right?
So every week, there's eleven shifts that somebody calls.
Between ten and eleven, yes.
And there's fourteen vacation shifts every week? You know, just by dividing?
You know, between days and nights, yeah. Typically, when they take a vacation day, a lot of times they'll take a twenty-four-hour shift a day and a night, not always, but majority of the time. And when they take a week, they take two days and two nights, two twenty-four-hour shifts.
So is that normal? I mean, I just didn't, I mean, that just seemed like a lot, if every week you have to deal with eleven sick shifts and fourteen vacation shifts every week?
It's a lot of shifts and the thing is, we've been, instead of having eleven or twelve men per shift, we've been having ten, so, and that's a minimum meaning per se.
Right.
So basically, almost every shift you have to hire, if one person's out, you have to hire. Typically, if you have eleven or twelve, you have a buffer of two people, if two people are out, you don't have to hire, but, you know, to get those personnel back on the floor and it takes time, and like I said, aside from those people that are sick, we have two people on disability leave, one since December.
And they're in that sick time?
They're not in the sick time.
Oh, right, they're in this.
They're in the disability leave, that's totally, totally different, so if somebody gets hurt on the job, sick leave is getting hurt off the job. And again, the forty percent of that sick leave, forty percent out of those eleven, four-and-a-half people a week, that's three people total, not knocking they got hurt, stuff happens, but I give them credit because they did build up their time and they had that time banked, so if something like that happened, they did have that time.
So if, if we only have ten guys on at one point in time, could that mean that two guys are actually supposed to be on, but they're getting paid vacation pay?
You have, we have, typically you have a shift of twelve, we're at full complement, we have two shifts of twelve, two shifts of eleven. So the two shifts of twelve, if two people are out, you don't have to hire anybody. The shift of eleven, two people are out, you hire one. Due to the hiring challenges of the academy and all the things I just spoke of, we're basically at, you know, with the DL and the long-term sick, we're at, we had three shifts of ten and one shift of nine, so I mean, no matter, if nobody was out, I'd have to hire for that one shift.
Right, but I guess it's, I'm seeing it's difficult because, like I said, you've got fourteen vacation shifts every week that you have to deal with, so if you have.
You know, that's so, seven days and seven nights, fourteen shifts, so if you break that down, you're doing about, probably two out of three days, you're hiring a vacation day and night. You know, if you look at this, three-hundred-and-one days.
Could be like one and a half people.
Three-hundred-and-sixty-five days a year, you know, you know, five out of six times you're hiring, so it's not, it's not, it's fourteen a week probably, probably like ten a week. Ten vacation days and nights a week, five each a week on average that you're hiring for.
A week?
That could be one person almost, really.
If you take one person's gonna take two days and two nights, so that's basically two and a half people taking a week off.
If you want a vacation for it, it could be.
The average firefighter.
That's the average for every week.
There's forty, how many?
If you take three-hundred-and-one vacation days, three-hundred-and-sixty-five days.
And two-fifty-five.
Let's do math on that.
All right, don't you have to have them both?
Basically, it's five, six, so, you know, it's, it's not every day.
Right.
But you, and the average firefighter gets between two and five weeks a year, so the average firefighter, say, has got three and a half weeks vacation, all right?
Right.
So they're gonna, they're gonna take that, they have personal days, they have earned leave days, and they have fifteen sick days a year. and they have fifteen sick days a year. The average has been higher, it's down to a little below eight right now, we're trying to manage that to get a little bit less this year, like seven and a half. Going in the right direction, it's not changing overnight.
Right.
But, you know, people do get sick, it's been a tough year for everybody. The other factor is, I think the average MMA says about five days a week is average for anybody in the world, and what business you're in to be out sick for a year, you sick days. The fire service, we're constantly in the back of ambulances. Every disease, everything that's going on, they're in the back, none of them coming into station. So sickness in the fire department, the labor of the job, we would expect it to be higher. Am I saying this is justified? No, I'm not. It's a challenge.
Yeah, I get, my question is more like, if we do, because we get some criticism that there's only ten guys on when there should be twelve guys on, or something's not manned or whatever, and there's a hundred reasons why that could be, but is part of it because there's just not enough guys? Because there's guys on vacation, there's guys that are sick, and there's just not enough manpower to do it sometimes?
Well, you need the manpower to fill those gaps. So like I said, we go to full complement, you do not have to, you hire the guys, you pay the overtime. The overtime rate is high right now because we hired the guys, but it's taking time, and we have two more that we're filling in. So the time lag, that eight, nine, ten months it takes, you can't do anything about it.
Right.
You know, the hiring process, and then the academy, and then the academy timed it, they have a ten weeks. And then they get back, not everybody's ready to go right away, sometimes at EMS pilot, they need a little more time. We have one of the three right now that's going to take an extra month or two to get up to speed before we can say, listen, you're ready to go in the back of the ambulance. But the other two have experience, two weeks in-house training, you're on the ambulance starting next week, next Monday and Tuesday, two of them hit the floor, a shift strike. So that reduces that, so that when you're at a full complement, you don't have to hire every time. But basically, this whole year, almost, we have to hire every shift that's been taken off. You know, just due to the vacancies and all this, we've had some sick time issues pretty long-term, we've had disability issues, they all create vacancies, you know, through all the boards. It's going to be hard, no matter which way it is, with vacation, whether it's sick, vacancy, personal day, early leave day.
Sean?
John, your job should get a little easier, it's just, I would assume that when you hire new people, they don't come in with the same benefits someone is leaving with after thirty years. Am I correct? So?
I am waiting for the job to get easier.
Well, I mean, it's.
I'm waiting, and I'm learning a lot.
Right. But isn't that how it happens? All right, I'm a new firefighter, so I don't have the benefits that Tony just left with after thirty?
The chief judge just left, and a new person coming in, that does weigh out overtime. So like I said, once we get to the full complement again, which we're working hard to get towards, we have interviews again next week, hopefully then we have two firefighters we can hire, and then that's going to take some time. We don't foresee maybe one other person in the next four years if nothing changes, anybody gets hurt, that would be, so we're going through a fairly frequent, you know, retiring, and then four or five years from now, we get all another bunch going out. So, but I think we have a lag or a little bit of time where we don't have to have the frequency of people leaving and hiring new personnel. But you're right, when somebody leaves, you get five weeks vacation, you get more longevity and everything else, and somebody comes in the door, they get two weeks vacation.
But like you just said, it takes that person ten months to hit the floor, so you, you know, it does hurt.
It's vacancy, it's like, somebody calling in sick for ten months, same thing.
It's a vacancy.
You know, but, you know, like I say, most of it's contractual, the time it takes to hire, and, you know, the stuff you can manage, everybody is given fifteen sick days a year, we're a little below eight, we can get better, we're working on that. You know, I'm not saying the sick, or they're not sick, you know, that's something we can't manage, but just to try to encourage, listen, if you're sick, stay home, if you're not sick, please come to work.
Is there any way we can put an incentive in there? Is there any way you can do that with the contract?
There are some incentives out there, you know, let me give you an example. You've got guys that have never called in sick, and some of them are getting up to a hundred and eighty days, we can't carry more than a hundred and eighty days. So these guys that don't call in sick now have, they're giving back fifteen days a year when everybody else is using them. So there's no, right now, over nine days, our contract says you get twenty-five dollars a day. So it's two dollars an hour. It's not a great incentive for these guys now. I'm not saying they're calling in sick because they're not sick, but they're hitting a hundred and eighty days, and it's, you know, and it's like, what do I do? You know? They're using some of the time.
They're using, yeah.
You know? And I said, I'm not saying they're not sick, but that's using the time. Exemplary people that have got to this point, with a hundred and eighty days built up, it takes a long time to do that, and they've done the right thing the whole time, and all of a sudden you hit the door, and it's just going out the window, you know? So I mean, I think, to your point, Mike?
Right.
Some creative ways to incentivize, it's a lot more cost-effective to give incentives than it is to call in sick. That's, I'm all for that. But, you know, there's still an open contract, but there's other things on the table, see what happens. But I have gotten involved with town administrator and the union since the fall, to try to bring those things together, but, you know, that's still been a challenge for us.
Tony?
So the sick, just to get this, so the sick time is really perceived as part of the compensation, not as an insurance, like you're sick, you get paid for it, you know?
I think it's a little both.
Yeah.
I think it's a little both. You actually, we encourage people, especially the young guys, to save your sick time, you never know when something's going to happen like these big personnel.
No, but like if you're over a hundred and eighty, if you save your hundred and eighty, and then all of a sudden, the next year, you only are sick five days, you're not sick very much because you saved a hundred and eighty days, right?
The rest of the day just give away, and the other guy's using them, so you're like, all right, you know, he's using.
Yeah, so it's really perceived as giving it away as opposed to, I've got like an insurance where if I'm actually really sick?
Insurance is maxed out, the insurance at a hundred days, your insurance policy is maxed out a hundred days, you know, after that, you're giving it back.
What about a bank or something?
Well, but I'm saying, it's not giving it back.
Everybody's entitled to give a sick bank one day a year.
Yeah, okay.
And it's only been used, I think, once in the last ten years, but if somebody had cancer, if somebody had run out of time, or something bad happened, they could go to that sick bank, it has to be approved by the chief, usually the union president, one other person, there's a three-person panel. But it is there, it's almost like a disability insurance. It's a great tool to have, basically, pretty much everybody bags one day a year.
Right.
So, and that's up there, there's plenty of time in that if somebody really got sick instead of having a disability insurance policy. Like I say, there's a lot, there's not a lot, but there's probably a four or five that are getting close to a one-eighty, and they're like, no, I'm just giving it back. So I think incentives and creative incentives to save money long-term is a positive.
So I just, there's a lot of information in the community that's, I don't think, accurate about how we staff and don't staff, and how the second ambulance gets manned, and I hope this sort of clarifies that issue, is it's not a staff shortage issue, it's a matter of the positions being filled and the lag time that we take to get people on the floor after they're trained. We're also hiring two more people next Wednesday. He's had unusual injured-on-duty this year and the vacancies, but philosophically, I think the chief and I are a hundred percent on what's causing the use of non-injured-on-duty sick leave and how the fire department usage compares with all other town departments. And that's something that he's been tasked with and has done a really great job the last few months. But manning the second ambulance or not manning a ladder truck, there's lots of different factors that go into that. And as you can see, we've increased the overtime budget every single year, but each year is unique in terms of what happens, and this year it was vacancies, at least three I O Ds, I think, chief, right?
Yes.
And then that coupled with, I think the report that we did said there were eleven-hundred vacation shifts to cover each year. So just because, as we said, there's folks that have been on long tenure, and they're entitled to their vacation. But this contract is very generous in terms of its sick leave provisions already, and we've actually been looking to try to discuss with the union ways to make that more palatable and maybe put it someplace else, but it's an ongoing dialogue.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Chief, Nancy, thank you very much. All right, let's get to our next one. Kevin, are you with?
Yes.
That concludes our discussion review of annual special town meeting related items, which gets us to new business. And it's a discuss the dune reconstruction at Peggity Beach. Kevin, Patrick, how are you gentlemen?
Excellent. Thank you. Patrick's here with me. We are just going over this, we want to present it to the selectmen. I had been out there with Sean at one point. The residents of Peggity Beach had a permit that was done back about four and a half years ago through conservation to rebuild the dune in front of their homes on the town portion of land, which they've done this year at their own cost. And they're going to be planting some grass, some special seagrass up there, and also some, putting some fence up there to preserve the dune and build the dune and work at it to protect their homes and protect their road. There's a little plan of it right there. So we just want to present it to the selectmen and see if there were any questions. I know I had talked to Sean, I had met Sean out there, and a couple others, and just bring it in front of you and see what you guys thought of it.
All right, so where was the excess sand that was built up?
The excess sand that was built up, it was all filled in, I got my red pointer today, I'm using it too.
Thank you, that's very good.
It's filled in this area right here.
On Inner Harbor Road.
On Inner Harbor Road, and most of it came from the beach. It all came across here, and it also came here. The town, as a town, we cleaned up this whole section right here, and the residents cleaned the road up and around their houses, and they built it up into a dune in this area right here.
All right, and that was acceptable?
That had been permitted through conservation, I don't want to speak for Pat, but.
Yeah, this came about five years ago, and to put something on town-owned property, they probably should have gone before the board of selectmen for a permit or some type of a license, but I think it went through DEP fine, and it was looked at as building up the beach, but there could be liability for the town in this case because we're allowing equipment and private people to put sand out there. So their permit was due to expire or to be looked at again in five years. So the five years are up now, so we're going to go back and, you know, put it out to bid and just have DEP look at it, and then bring it before the board of selectmen and see if there's a license or a permit that they could request, because it is our property.
Okay.
But this is a great partnership with the residents down there who have been really proactive and recognized, you know, the need to sort of build up some impediments to the water, and both Patrick and Kevin have worked really closely with them, and it's just a really, really good collaboration and example.
It's been going on for at least six years.
I had different times sat in different homes, and it was almost, it seemed at that time, it was almost like we weren't going to be able to come to an agreement, it was when, before Kevin was here, Al was there, and, you know, they, people wanted to do something, they wanted the town to do it, they wanted to do it themselves, but, and I think it started with Vinny?
Yeah, Vinny, I remember it was Vinny. I know it was Vinny.
So I, you know, Kevin had met me down there so we could see it firsthand, and I'd say eighty, ninety percent of the material that washed over in the, you know, not into the marsh, but into the road, has been removed, so now those people where Kevin has blackened it out, they can, at their expense, they can get to their homes. I just kind of panicked when I saw it, that's all, and Tricia did go down there, and maybe it wasn't as bad as I thought, but it was a pretty good mound in front of those homes, and, you know, if, as long as people, you know, people have room to.
Did it get leveled?
Are you moving it? Yeah.
Yeah, it was leveled this past winter with the storm. It had been up, two years ago they replaced it. Last winter, it didn't get hit very badly, and then this year it was pretty much leveled, and so the houses were very exposed, so they went and brought all the sand back. Initially, though, there were never specifications or an engineered plan as to how high the mound should go, it kind of depends on the year. So this year, the mound looks pretty high.
It's higher this year than it was in the past.
Has that been, I think, was that your question? Has that been leveled out? Has that been pushed out?
We leveled off, and this section right here, the dune, when we brought this material out, we stacked everything up in this area here, that way we could bring it out during high tide, and we leveled this area so we have a good beach area, we also have to comb through it because it's debris, we found lobster traps, two-by-fours and everything through the sand, so we clean up the sand. We don't leave it as a dune, I, you know, we don't want anybody to get hurt there, so we do the best we can to rake it up. But that section is, but this section was left right here where the dune is, where they're going to be planting some grass up top and also running two sections of fence, top section of the dune.
So it's a good plan, the only thing is just future, I think we need to make sure that the combing through that material, because if it gets spread on our town side, I can only see a little kid stepping on a lobster pot and doing something or cutting themselves with some of the debris that's overwashed into the harbor.
Are they going to level the huge mound that's in front of their houses?
No, that's, that's the height they initially proposed when they wrote this up five years ago. They could go at higher, elevation twenty-two, I believe it was. And they're right about at that this year.
Can you walk down from this end of Peggity Beach to the other end?
Yeah.
Between the tidal lines, you mean?
No, just on the beach.
Yeah.
At high tide.
At high tide.
At high tide.
High tide, it gets a little tight.
Go down and look.
Because it wasn't like that last year.
Right, last year, they didn't build it up because they didn't have as much moved back into the parking lot.
So do they intend to make it walkable? Do they intend to knock it down? I guess that's what we wanted to find out at the last meeting.
Okay, I wasn't at the last meeting, but, I mean, it's piled up there now, and if it's not walkable, the town owns it, I'm sure we could say, you know, we want it changed.
Is, is grass planted on it now?
Not yet, not yet. They're planning on planting grass in the fence, which is up in this upper section. If you.
Kevin, I need to ask a few questions. I don't have a picture, image of it, I didn't see it. So where exactly is the sand piled up to their satisfaction? In front of their houses, on the beach? Right, right in that area, right there, okay. Where's the property line for Town Beach? Okay, so my question, and I think it's been answered, but I just want a clarification. So in other words, we've entered into, or they went and said they wanted to protect their homes, it was overwashed with sand, the sand was then collected, put in front of their homes, but it's on town property. It's size of almost twenty-two feet? Is that exactly what I'm hearing? Twenty-one elevation? Okay. So it's pretty high, because the ocean is the base of it, right? That's elevation zero, water. So almost twenty-two feet high, and it potentially acts as a barrier for the people who live on Third Cliff to be able to get access to the beach during high tide. Am I missing anything here? Is that pretty much a possibility, what I'm hearing?
Part of what it's doing too is protecting the marsh, the salt marsh from getting filled in, and, you know, they.
On the other side of their house?
Right, on the other side of the house.
I'm only asking that because I can tell you right now, you know what's going to happen in about sixty days, when the weather gets really super hot, and people are going to go down to the beach, and they're going to say, it's high tide, because it's a Saturday, not the low tide, and they can't get there. And rightly so, they're going to go bananas, and they're going to say, what did the town do?
So the town's been doing this for the last five years, and the dune has been that high in the past. It hasn't eroded because we have had mild winters, it's all gone, and they're essentially redoing it now, only to Patrick's point, they're doing it properly.
Tricia?
That is never.
Slopes, but never like that.
Have you been out there recently? Since they reshaped it?
No, no.
Well, that's what we're asking. Did they...
Right.
I think just the section that Kevin was working on near our parking lot was reshaped. I don't believe...
Well, we didn't touch any of that dune there. We just did, we just did this section here. That dune has remained the same way it is.
So when you were out there two weeks ago and you asked me to look at it, I went the next day. And then I went again. When did George go out there?
Well, George only did.
About a week ago.
But what we saw two weeks ago has changed yet again. So, but so the question is, is, and I think the board is asking, is we need to ensure that there's enough room for people at high tide to be able to walk and that might have them shored up a little more back more so the dune itself will be higher, but it will guarantee people the ability to walk down there.
Well, they're not going to want a 25-foot dune in, up against their house.
No.
Right? I think we need to talk to the neighbors and find out what to do and level those, level the mounds.
At least bring them down to some degree because at least for, I mean, to have it at 22 feet, you're going to have to have a wider base. If you have it less, you could, you could reduce the base, right?
I think it's a little, when Pat, when Pat said elevation 22 and it sounds like it's 22 feet high, I think it's more like 12 feet, probably. 12 feet high off the sand and it goes, it goes off to that edge.
Off the regular beach, then it comes up.
So is it just 12 feet?
I'll drive a, you can drive a truck.
So it might be 24 feet and then 12 feet high, you know, or it's bigger than 24 feet down the bottom. It's a steep slope.
So you see your kids go into it and then you'll have to wait a little while and see if they come out on the other end when they're walking.
Well, this is part of a plan and it's, you know, probably before Pat, before Kevin. So, you know, and if these people built it to the plan, you know, to the...
Well, it's on town property, right? So we have control of the material.
Right.
We have an opportunity at the five-year mark to revisit it.
Right, that's, that's what we're planning on doing.
But this is, you know, this is all forshore protection. We're trying to stabilize this area so it doesn't overwash into the marsh and protects those houses in a more long-term basis for storms as well. So, I mean, we have to make sure we have the beach access, but this is what we want people to do.
I don't think that's what we want to do on one of the most popular public beaches in town.
And Tony, I understand exactly what you're saying, but it's not, I think, what you're picturing it because it's been there for five years and we've had the access. I've been down there twice in the past seven days.
I'll go look at it again. If there's a 12-foot mound, it hasn't been there because I go to Peggy Beach all the time. So there's never been a 12-foot mound blocking the public way.
I'm not saying it's blocking the public way. The question before the board is if it's there enough room to walk at high tide for beachgoers. And I'm not saying it was there a year ago even, but I'm saying five years ago when this plan, imperfect as it was in terms of documentation or according to Patrick, that was what it was, but...
I guess what I'm saying is I just don't want a walkway next to a 12-foot wall.
Right, I understand. Yep.
Tell you what, why don't we do this? Okay, I haven't been down. I'm going to go take a look at it. Everybody on the board, if you could, between now and our next meeting, not in Monday.
For a moon, we can...
For a moon. It's snowing right now. Get down there and take a look at it, okay? And I'm only saying because I know what's going to happen. We're going to have people complaining. I just want to make sure that the beach is going to be set.
The one tricky issue if I can bring up is they are, there's a little side sketch over here, which you'd have to rotate to see where it is. They're looking to plant some grass up in this area right here on the top of the berm. If you look at the berm like this, it's this back section over here. And there's only a certain season when you can plant that grass. The grass is only good for...
It's in April, pretty much.
It's pretty much the month of April you can plant that seagrass for it to take.
Does that get pushed back a month this year since we're a little late with the...
Early ago for Saturday. It was usually later, so they did push it back so it's later in April this year.
Supposed to be, they're doing it Saturday. That and the fencing is, from what I saw.
That's what they're hoping to do.
No, they don't, we, they have to get permission. That's why Kevin's here.
Here's a thought. I tell you what, we're going to have a meeting on Monday before our town meeting. So why don't we all take a look at it between now and Monday so we can address it and tell them they're going to have to wait. Not you, Patrick, but Kevin, but I mean, they got to wait. You just got to make sure that it's, I mean, and we just had this discussion on forshore protection. It's absolutely a big necessity. Having said that, though, we also need to balance the harms of beach, a public beach and making sure that, you know, that we're also not, you know, infringing on other people's rights. So let's just take a look at that and then we'll have a vote, I guess, on Monday.
That's why we thought it'd be important to bring up to everybody. And actually, I expected a couple of the residents to be here also if they were aware of it.
Ruth, do you have any comments on that? Oh, no. Just one if you're, okay, just checking.
One of Tony's points. I think what we're trying to do at the end of this is to get together an order of conditions where we actually have dimensions and measurements. You have to leave so much on the base of the sand dune. You have to, you can't build it any further than some permanent structure from the house at certain heights and we have to have it engineered. It's not that way now. In some years it's higher and we get a lot of calls.
And that was a plan as it was submitted. It was actually on a sheet about half this size. I blew it up so that we have something to work with.
It wasn't an engineered plan and it is a requirement of an order of intent. You have to have an engineered plan. This one wasn't.
And that wasn't crayon. And that wasn't crayon. So we're going to straighten this out.
So this, this was not an engineered plan and it's supposed to...
It was a sketch plan. It was, they used the assessors map for the, you know, the plan that they submitted five years ago. And I think that was the balance of, you're going to be nowhere from the beach. We're not going to make you go through, you know, a full engineered plan.
Yeah, the conservation agent accepted it at that time, so...
Not this one. This one's a good one. All right. So what we'll do is we're going to, Sheila, if we could have it before, at 6:30, be one of the first items that we address Monday, Monday evening, okay? Sorry to keep you guys. We'll make you first on Monday. How's that?
Then we can leave, bud.
After five, maybe.
Pat, thank you. Kevin, thank you very much.
Thank you guys.
All right, let's get to the discussion vote, OPM contract for Public Safety Complex.
Quickly, we went out to bid for OPM for the Public Safety Complex. The Public Building Commission received seven proposals. They interviewed four companies, recommended three to me to interview. Nancy Holt and I interviewed three of them a week ago Monday after review and checking of references and similar experience in prior projects. Recommending that the board award the contract to Vertex Company of Waymouth for not to exceed amount of $427,000. The OPM will provide all services as the town's project manager, development design, preparing all the bids, sub-bids, being clerk of the works during the construction of the project. And I already know it will be a little lower than this, but in order to have you sign the contract so they can get going and hit the ground running, which they already have, they've attended two meetings, I would look for a motion to approve this contract.
Just two thoughts on that. First is please impress upon them the need to make sure that this comes in on time.
Yeah.
Having that, but not sacrificing, you know, cutting corners to make sure it's done right. That's the last thing.
Right. We really want it on budget. We're not on such a time crunch as other projects in town, but on budget's very important and I think they have a particular expertise in that area.
Questions?
Motion?
Motion.
Would the board of selectmen approve the owner's project manager contract to Vertex of Waymouth for Public Safety Complex not to exceed $427,000?
Motion by Mr. Vignani, seconded by Mr. Harris. All those in favor?
Aye.
Next, moving on to a discussion vote, sewer. This is, where's it at? Two, I believe. All right, so just so that people understand, bear with me for one second. So parcel ID 14-1-6-0, resident was billed for two sewer hookups and they were billed, billed from billing on those two and there, there's only one single-family dwelling. And so they are seeking, I guess, an adjustment to reduce the billed amount. The resident was billed $37,772 for two connections and it should be $28,329 for a 1.5 connection for a single-family home in a one-bedroom apartment. So that's the first one. Can I get a motion on that?
Just a quick question. Could they ever turn that apartment into a dwelling?
No, it's a studio apartment.
No? Okay.
It's my house. Okay. It's small, it's under 676, well, it's 576 square feet and it's actually attached to the main house. It's above the garage. The intent was, my mother's getting old and I was going to make it an in-law apartment, but she refuses to leave the homestead, so...
Good intentions.
And it was, it's been like that when my wife bought the house, actually she bought it the month before the no-name storm and I got funded with no-name storm. That's a different story. It was the original, on the plan, the original part of the house without that, that yellow thing, that main part of the house, there was an apartment upstairs and an apartment downstairs. And when we re-did renovation, we just moved it over there just to keep that little tiny spot, just in case we really needed it for family members. At some point, someone, if, you know, hopefully they can make it into a single-family house and they can get rid of that. It's all just one connection that we thought, we thought we could remove, but she liked it anyway, that decision.
Motion?
Please.
Move the board of selectmen, sewer commissioners, approve an adjustment of $9,443 plus interest or any charges billed in error for one-half of a sewer unit for parcel ID 14-1-0-6-0.
Second. Motion by Mr. Vignani, seconded by Mr. Harris. All in favor?
Aye.
And the second one is parcel ID 28-22-004. A resident was billed a sewer betterment on a non-buildable wetlands lot. The bill for that was for $18,886 for that non-buildable lot and they are seeking an abatement for that amount of money.
It's right across from the parking lot there. It's, it is wet. I don't think you ever...
Crossed with wetlands too.
Oh, yes, yeah.
When did they get built? Oh, this was just recent.
Part of the...
Yeah.
Squash get primed. Yeah.